Alright, everything's set up, streaming, recording, and you're good to go. Enjoy your meeting, guys.
Thank you.
Enjoy our meeting.
Yes, sir. What's that? I do welcome by assistance. So that's what happened last time when the input dropped out. But we did have a backup on the house. What's that? Well, there's a video that's in the back. I'll take a look at it. I checked the issue and took the other two off to check. Then left just one. But I'll make sure to get there.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution, which stands, "One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
Good morning to all. The next regular meeting of the Board of Supervisors will take place Friday, October 28, 2022, at 9:00 AM at the Community Center, 3500 Edgewater Drive, Sebring, Florida, 33872. Please silence or turn off your cell phones. We will swallow consent agenda minutes of the Board of Supervisors regular meeting now, September 23, 2022.
Why are we getting feedback? He's talking, it's echoing back. Can you hear it? Did you hear it?
I can hear you.
Alright, something coming back at me. Okay, do I have a motion?
Second. Any board comments on the minutes? Okay, there's just two corrections that I noticed on page five. When they're talking about seventh order of business in the vote, the vote's listed as 5-0. There was only four people who voted. So that needs to be changed. And then the other thing, this is kind of mine, on page 11, we were talking about security, and Mr. Hernandez, I don't know if this is right, he said we went from 862 miles to 9,303 months, month to month?
One was for the week, one was for the month.
If you're going to talk, I gotta tell you what, I listened to the recording last time. Everybody who talks gotta come up to the microphone and do it properly, because you can't hear them. I couldn't hear them from the recording. So if somebody just answers, you come up to the microphone and re-answer it.
I'll get the answer there for you now.
Okay, let's just zoom, yeah, to the microphone.
I don't have a copy of the report here, Mr. Brooks, but it could be just a typographical error, or it could have been from a week to a month, could have been that.
Can we just check that so we get it right for the records, please?
Yes, sir.
I have a question. You put on 9,300 miles in a month?
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
No way. I'm afraid to say that 9,300 miles like going over a coaster.
If that's what's written, I will get the answer.
Oh, that's right, oh, okay.
If that's what's written, but I'll get the answer for it.
Thank you. And get Chris with that so we can get that corrected. Is there any other board comments? Any public comments? Alright, we have a vote.
Supervisor Phillips?
Yes.
Supervisor Hurley?
Yes.
Supervisor Gilpin?
Yes.
Supervisor Hurley?
Yes.
President Brooks?
Yes. Okay, public comment, this is for anything not pertaining to something that's on the agenda list. And I guess we have a new way of doing this?
I guess I'll just call people up to do their comments.
We're gonna call people who filled out the cards. Obviously, anybody who did not fill out a card that wants to speak as well will be able to speak. We'll swallow with the people who filled the cards out.
Giselle? Giselle Quintana?
Yeah, I need everybody to come up to the mic, speak into the mic, and state your name first. Please.
My name is Giselle Quintana, I live at 4910 Calatrava Avenue.
Okay.
Okay, so my house faces the golf course. On Calatrava, we have a lot of flooding. The hurricane we had five years ago, Irma, flooded my house. We also have a pool. The golf course flooded. There's also a ditch behind. That flooded. All that water went into the pool, all that water went into our house. We live on a duplex. It's myself and my parents and my aunt. We, everything I've destroyed in the house, basically. After everything had happened, everybody who lived on the side that we live on, facing the golf course, everybody's carpets were rolled up. So I guess I can kind of speak on behalf of everybody who lives on that side, on the golf course side of Calatrava. My neighbors had flooding, we went into their house, because they live in Wisconsin. We had to go open their windows so that it can dry. This year, same thing happened again with the flooding. I mean, what are we gonna do to assess the situation and fix it?
I'm not quite sure what our position is in a situation like this. Obviously, we're gonna hear a lot about flooding, I believe. What is the district's stance? I'm not totally sure.
We have a facilities plan in the work and an engineering design. In some cases, it could be part of the system. In some cases, there's homes flooded all over southwest Florida, and the stormwater system can't handle the amount of water. So there are houses that could get flooded, we couldn't prevent it.
I mean, even regardless, even when it's heavy raining, last week, even before the storm, Calatrava had flooded. That ditch gets full of water, and I see it, I'm the last house on Calatrava. So we can see that water, as soon as that ditch floods, we see it coming towards us. Are they, I know they're doing some repairs on the golf course, is it irrigation that they're doing right now?
That's irrigation, they're just putting new pipe in.
Is it piping for...
Irrigation water, it's just for the golf course.
For sprinklers?
Yeah, the irrigation that they're working on now has nothing to do with, I believe, what you're talking about.
Yeah.
That's a water system.
I mean, there always is city running for the golf course and the golfers and the Ivan view, but nothing to affect irrigation since it's in some way.
Well, I'll just probably take a look at the economics, drainage maintenance, and the because it could be that some work needs to be done to clean the ditches. Have you called us before about this, or just now?
No, we've called when we had that heavy rainstorm.
A few weeks before.
There was a lot of people who were calling about that.
Can I ask, Bob, do you have another question?
Bob Grunfeld, Road and Drainage Supervisor. We have revised our schedule of work priorities to be done for this next year's budget. That is included in what we're, as one of our higher lists of priorities to try to get done next year, is to clean those swales behind the houses on Calatrava. They need to be regraded, cleaned out, and that's part of what we have in our plan for next year's budget. But we will be addressing Calatrava issues.
We're gonna see that later, right?
Yeah, you'll see, we'll show that to you later.
Which hall does, ma'am, what?
15.
Yeah, what hall are you on?
15.
15.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm Virgil.
Yeah, talk to Virgil.
It's Andrew Schickel.
Okay, I should have your mic. Thank you, Robert.
Roger, Virgil.
So my understanding is that we'll look at it later, we're gonna address that situation in the coming year, which we've already started.
Steve Harrigan?
Steve Harrigan, I live at 4501 Myrtle Beach Drive, in the Deer Run section. I talked to Mr. Schumaker a couple weeks ago, and he told me to, I gave him an email, he told me to come to this meeting.
Speak a little louder to the mic, please. Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
I talked to Mr. Schumaker a couple weeks ago, and he told me to come here to this meeting. I have a drainage issue similar to hers. Mine's a problem is, my ditch drains, and I bought a gas pump, and I could pump it out in an hour. But the way the land is designed, all Pebble Beach and all Myrtle Beach comes and drains into my yard. So my yard can be, four hours later, it's full. So for two weeks, I gotta pump water out. I got a 10,000, 11,000 gallons an hour pump, and I've been pumping for over a week. This thing went on 14 inches. And I've complained to the district many times. Everyone sees me out there all the time with the pump pumping water out.
Mr. Schumaker, he asked you to come to this meeting? You asked him to come to this meeting, did you give a resolution on what we should do about this situation?
That's systematic to that whole area over there.
I'm sorry?
It's systematic to the whole area over there, it takes some major work, and all the drainage is coming down Pebble Beach and draining into his side yard, and he has a pump that is actually pumping it out to a vacant lot behind his property, and his concern was, well, what happens when they sell that lot and build a house? And so I asked him for public information and for the board to know the kind of problem he has and what he's been trying to do with it, because he said nothing's been done about it.
We're making the board aware it's fine, do we have a solution for the judge?
At this time, no, it's gonna have to be part of a big solution. You can't just go in there and clean a ditch, or it's major drainage coming from that whole area and the golf course, and it deadends right into his front yard.
I got a map here that I've drawn to show you. You should have a idea of what's going on. This is my house. The water drains from here, Pebble Beach here, this is Woods and Iron, the water drains here. All of, Myrtle Beach drains this way, and it goes downhill to here. My house is a foot higher than this culvert. So this is how it fills up to two or three feet before it gets to my yard. And then my yard's all uphill back to this stream. So it just pours a total pool there. I come down over 700,000 gallons a week.
I am not an engineer, I understand what you're telling me, I don't have any resolution.
Somebody put a culvert, it's a foot higher on my side, and it had a drain in my way.
I would have to have somebody go out and look at it and report back in terms that I could understand. I don't know.
I've been doing this first time I've come here, but I've been to the district a dozen times.
And they never fixed it?
Well, semis coming into my yard also.
Maybe it can't be fixed, I don't understand, again, I am not an engineer at this point, never have been. That's why we have people who can check these things out and report back. I can't give you an answer at this point in time, what we can do, if we can do anything.
What should I be, should I have to pump that water directly off the block?
I think you made the right step in alerting us, the current board, and we'll check it out and we'll get you an answer. I mean, I can't give you an answer today that you would like or that I'm able to do.
About semis coming into my yard, kind of my sprinklers, and putting rocks in the yard. My entrance here, Woods and Iron, that's the only street coming into this district. Other homes are still down.
Steve, could you step back to the Myrtle Beach? Would you be able to show?
Sorry.
Steve?
Go back to the mic.
Yeah.
My apologies.
Thank you.
We're having a one-on-one.
The second part I got is, the semis coming into my yard.
Well, let's address one thing at a time. That's two issues now. We're gonna address your water problem, we'll get, your water problem, we'll get somebody on it to find out if indeed something could be done. I can't give you an answer on that today. As far as the trucks going, what, they're cutting the corner and going on your property? I would, I mean, we were supposed to check this out when we put...
Everybody in the neighborhood, they almost got stakes with flags on them.
Do you have them?
Yes.
And they're still going over your stakes? I said, do you have them, so they won't go on your property?
Yes, we're all broke around, red stuff, all around too.
Is it working? Are they still, they're going through your stakes and still driving on the property?
They brought you in there, they brought the sprinklers.
Next time that happens, get the name of the company, the truck. How else would you want me to stop this?
I've gone to other homes a dozen times, I get the wear around. They say they'll fix it, they never do nothing.
Well, how are they gonna, I mean, by fixing it, they're gonna tell the companies not to drive on your property. The actual drivers, if they do, we have to, I mean, hopefully, we get the information on who it is, and when then we will take action. But if we don't know who to go after, it's probably...
The street's not wide enough. It doesn't matter who it is.
The street's not wide enough?
Whoever's behind the street did not make it for semis. They get them.
I don't believe we can address that at this time. All the streets in Southern Lake are narrow, from what I understand.
They came out earlier this year, put eight, widened to eight feet, it's still not enough.
I... Nothing has been done for that? I don't know how to prevent it. You put stakes up, if they drive through your stakes, I'm not sure, unless I know who it is, I don't know how to prevent it. If I knew who it was, we could call the company and take some action on it, and at least get, you know, any damage taken care of for you. But I don't know who to call.
Every company I've done, they said without a picture, they will do nothing. Thousand dollars, security system, security system, down on London.
I'm afraid that's the best I can do for you. I'm sorry. We'll get back to you on that other issue of the water.
Daniel O'Reilly, Garvin. I wanted to remind everybody that we're, because of the amount of speakers today, we're gonna push the five-minute limit.
No five minutes?
Five minutes?
Thank you for hearing us. We purchased last year, July, on Lake Calatrava. We didn't know it was a lake. Just to lighten up things a little bit more.
That was a good timing.
Our home, what I want to say is, the drainage there, forget the hurricane, the drainage is totally inadequate. One of the reasons, I believe, I'm not an engineer, but I went around and cleaned drains personally, is it's nowhere for the water to go. It lays in those trenches until it gets to no man's land, and then it doesn't go anywhere. It just sits there. So those ditches stay full until they can drain themselves, not drain out somewhere. Now, we used to live in Donellen, and Donellen has, I don't know what you'd call them, but they have areas like a whole lot that's dug deep, and that's where the water drains, and it can sit in that area and drain out. So it gets it away from the hole. I don't know if that's a solution, but there's a lot of empty lots in this place, and it certainly would be able to do something with that. Cleaning the ditches isn't gonna do a thing if there's nowhere for the water to go.
Okay.
The street, Calatrava, was flooded before the hurricane. We can't blame the hurricane, it was the heavy rain we had had nowhere to go. So the street was flooded halfway up my drive, within eight feet of the garage door. And that was with a heavy rain, that wasn't with the hurricane. So then, of course, two weeks later, whatever it was, the hurricane comes, and there's nowhere for that water to go again. The water drains off somewhere. But anyway, all of that to say, I have another issue. Wednesday morning, I woke up, we have a totally fenced yard, cyclone fence, and I hear this noise, and I look over, I was ready to get in the pool, I look over, it's noise that was being made at me, and there's two pit bulls in my backyard. No way that I could find that those pit bulls could get in there. I don't know if somebody opened the gate, let them in, or whatever. And I'm talking about dogs that came up to the fence when I walked over there and were not excited about me. So I don't know if somebody in the area owned pit bulls, and they got freed, got out of there. Later, I found a place, looking for it, the only place I could find they could have got in was an area dug under our cyclone fence, and it didn't look to me like these fat little guys could have fit under there. And so I just wanna, if somebody's got pit bulls that they're letting loose at night, we got a problem. I don't know what you can do about it, but anyway.
Did you call animal control?
I did not, it was 7:00 AM.
What did you do with it?
I eventually, very cautiously, opened my gate and ran. As they came at me.
I'm sure your neighbors would appreciate that.
I'm sure. Hopefully, the owner took them and hid them, but anyway, that's two things.
If we hear anybody claiming pit bulls, we'll know where to turn.
Yeah, no, I'm not looking for...
Now, you all part of the Calatrava, you guys all have the same issue with the water, is that what I'm hearing?
Yes.
That's a consensus, alright.
We're not, just for info, we're not on the golf course side, we're on the opposite side, so the whole street became a lake.
Alright, thank you, sir. Drew. Did you share your address? Can we put it on just... The street number?
4505.
We were told this promises to fix this with many five years ago at Irma. That this was all aware and was supposedly gonna be fixed. So nothing's obviously been done since then.
Thank you, sir.
William Mosely.
My name's William Messline.
Little louder, please.
My name, can you hear me now? Okay, my name is William Messline. I live at 4510 Calatrava. I live at the opposite end of your first speaker. Obviously, I don't wanna go into all the flooding, you've heard that. But I will say that as long as I've lived there, which has been a little over two years, I have never seen anybody do any maintenance to prevent flooding from the golf course or to clean out the ditch between my house, the house of on Calatrava, and the golf course. So for two and a half years, at least mine all week, since I lived there, nothing has been done. And I think it's time to do something.
Okay? Did you ever, like, ask for something to be done?
I called one time when we had a lot of rain and we had flooding, and I could see it coming off the golf course. I called into the district office, nothing was done. Okay, and I do live across the street from the last speaker, Daniel, and I'll just reiterate what he said. I don't wanna take up any more time, thank you.
Thank you.
John Walsh, or Patty Lake.
Good morning. Yeah, I'm John Walsh and Patty Lake, and we're at 4598 and 4600 Calatrava. And, you know, just looking at the layman's layperson's view, the golf course has a hole coming off the back of Calatrava. If you look down the back of all the yards, you'll see it's elevated a few feet. That water drains from the golf course, and I'm sure some of the other neighbors on their sides, and it hasn't been cleaned. So if you look at debris and foliage, it's just common sense, if you don't maintain that drainage ditch, it's just gonna back up. And that's what happened, so it backs up on each of the neighbors, it goes to the street. It flooded out our unit completely. So from a perspective, engineering perspective, the fix is pretty simple, if you just follow basic maintenance. Because no one's maintained that for years, and it's on, not the property owners. So if you go in there and you clean out those ditches, and you follow the natural elevation, it will drain. Like a French drain, you have to have depth, it's sandy soil, and it will drain down, it'll do what it's supposed to do, and it'll go through all the different shambles and work. But I swear to God, no one's been there for 10 years. So that, yeah, so that, you know, instead of complaining, let's come up with a solution, a simple solution of maintenance that can be done, working with everybody, and it will solve this problem.
I guess the question is, is there an actual maintenance, is there an actual maintenance plan in place? And can we get a copy of that maintenance plan?
It's part of the budget, you can do it, it's online.
And I've looked online, I also looked for historical, we're new owners in the area, so we feel like everybody else, and it's not a flood zone, so you weren't even thinking about getting flood insurance. Because nothing's identified that the areas are flooded, they get, why do you have to go somewhere? So there's always a potential. I couldn't even find historical rain data in the area. If we're able to take, I work in geographic information systems, and I'm able to take the historical data. This shouldn't happen years past, so it's either something that's changed the last five to 10 years, or it's the fact that we're not maintaining, so we had, that was in place five years ago.
Yeah, Patty used to handle the floodwater drains for the city of...
Los Angeles.
Fort Worth. So we're just trying to be solution-oriented, work with your folk, because you all don't make a lot doing this. You volunteers work very hard, it's appreciated. So you come here and all this built-up, you know, pent-up demand, if you just physically take any of the roads in our neighborhood, and like our road, and I don't wanna just say, come here and talk about me, I'm looking for the hole. If you just look at it, you'll see the culvert coming from the golf course, it's two feet high, I got pictures of it. It comes down, it gets trapped, you see all the vegetation, it hasn't been cleaned for years. There's nowhere for it to go. So if you dig that down...
We will, obviously, it's very top of the street right now.
Yeah, well, and the water, all the damage, entrance coming from the golf course from that back area, it's not coming from the road. Yeah, the road got flooded, but everything is coming from the backside where the golf course is. So it's that drainage from the golf, everything rushing in.
We'll keep it a five minutes. That's it, I mean, we're already out of time, and we're in trouble with all the clean water. And, you know, it's just work together, get a plan, but you can't wait a year, I'm telling you, this is gotta be done.
It's gotta be done by four next week.
But thank you all.
Thank you.
Tom Coste.
Tom Coste, 3524 Manor Drive, in some way. I believe I've got the solution to this drainage issue. The solution to it is regular maintenance, that has not been going on for as long as I've been here, and I've gone on 17, 18 years now. I've got the drawings of Manor Hill, which show the elevations every 100 feet on the center of the roadway from the original construction. Those elevations were drawn up and accepted by Polston Engineering, who's the district engineer. Every driveway's apron elevation is designed in order to act as a dam to allow flow over that driveway apron to the next swale. And each swale elevation is set on those drawings, they're outs only. Polston's been the engineering firm for this district for 50 years. I believe Dale Polston served on the Verat crew for Peterson Organization, who did the original plots. Those drawings, which I have, have notes on them about annual maintenance of the swales. Those drawings, which I have, have notes on them about annual maintenance of the swales. The elevations are supposed to be checked and maintained by the district. As an example, on the corner of Manor and Manor, where it comes together and goes back on itself. The, underneath the road there, there's, actually on both sides of the road, between two of the driveways, right after you go south from that intersection, there's a grate on either side of the road. The inlet elevation on those grates is within a half inch of each other. The one to the west is a half inch below, the one to the east. And from that structure, on the left side, on the west side of the road, there is a 12-inch continuation of a 12-inch corrugated pipe that goes over to behind the lots on Island. The corrugated pipe underneath the road came in about six years ago. And I stood out there on that corner with the manager of utilities, director of utilities here in Sunlake, and a representative from the Polston Engineering Firm. We saw that that pipe under the road, that equalizer pipe, which sends the water to the west and eventually to the retention pond on the golf course on Deer Run, on Deer Run, home number 16. That it came in, and the solution to that was to have George Loykow out there. He did so several times over the following three or four years, and filled the hole that was developing in the center of the road with hole catch. Each year it settled a little more, obviously it was going into the collapsed pipe. And eventually, that pipe got plugged. And now, this past year, during this rainy season, there's been water laying in the swales on that corner for four or five weeks after they accumulated there. It's got scum on top, there's little kids who were playing in the yard right adjacent to it. Furthermore, when you get over to Island, there's supposed to be a swale on the north property line of those homes. It never got put in. That line, that property line, had, was supposed to have a swale that would conduct the water further to the west, eventually under the island, as it cleared that circle. And then beyond that, under Mansa, as it cleared that. And then beyond that, under Sunrise. And beyond that, under the tee box of number 16 hole on Turtle. And eventually into that large retention pond that separates Manor Hill from Magnolia Place. All of that's on the drawings. And the notes on those engineering drawings indicate that those swales are supposed to be checked and maintained on an annual basis, even to the point of checking the surface to make sure that it's permeable enough that the water will settle in those swales. The whole idea is to allow the water to percolate in place, instead of piping it to Timbuktu and messing with the water table. So my point is, there has never, in the years that I've been here, there's not been an ongoing plan throughout this district to refer to those drawings and to have put together a maintenance plan to take care of those swales. And this, it's throughout the district.
Awesome.
So that, that's, I got just one other issue, real quick comment. I learned today, I asked the question, how many pickup trucks does the district own now? The answer I got is 10. 10 years ago, we had two. We wonder now why we got to raise our assessments to the tune of about $300 per water meter owner in this district, or water meter service, all that. Probably $300 a resident. And that's our contribution into whoever the developer is out in the back, who's going to be putting in, putting in new homes there. We all take for our own infrastructure. For instance, Deer Run Estates, probably 800 lots. The average new home in Deer Run Estates, Area C, is about 800 of them out there. The average home there spent somewhere around $12,000 per lot for the infrastructure that went in. But now, the board is about to approve, or perhaps already has. Tremendous increases, 30% increases in the water bill, 30% increases in the assessment to take us, we who have lived here for years, including those in the small homes that are 40 years old up front, probably the average age of the resident up there is probably close to 80, probably spent the last 20 years on fixed income. And we're going to increase their assessments by 30% over the next five years, so that the developer who's building out in the back doesn't have to put any infrastructure in up front like they did for the homes of us who have lived there all this time. Thank you.
Amy Strick.
Hi, my name is Amy Strick, I live at 6516 Metanze Drive. I want to know what is going to go on and when are the sewage issues that we have right in front of my home? Because we flooded with sewage on the 16th. And then it started again on the hurricane, and yes, they were able to get two homes about to shut them off during the hurricane, but the rest of us weren't. You can't even find where my sewage lines go into my three units under One Grove. The gray house, this is the third time that she has backed up. You guys told her in 2017, 2019, you fixed it. It's not fixed.
Where's that house?
Mine is 6516 Metanze Drive. My neighbors at 6518 Metanze were one of the ones that were affected from the September 16th storm, that now has gone into my condo through the joint wall. That my insurance won't cover, I can't go to them, because their insurance won't cover it, because it's in my condo. So my only solution is to hit you guys up, because I'm not paying for something that was allegedly fixed five years ago. So what's going to be done about this?
Is this part of the three homes? Is this the three homes?
There are three homes, the sun at Metanze and the triplex across the street, the end unit had infiltration into it. And we went out there and located the lines of two of the houses. One of them, they were damaged on the 17th from the tropical storm rains. And it has to do with, I can't even say where it is yet, but somehow those lines, the sewer lines, were connected into a side yard sewer line, not out front. And so far, you know, we don't have maps of what happens on the lot, just where it's connected into our system. So we just plugged the lines in the two houses that were damaged, so it wouldn't happen again during the hurricane. But we tried to find those lines, we were out there for three hours, a brain penetrating radar and probes, but they're probably connected in the wrong place to the system. We didn't do that connection, it was the developer and plumber who built those units. But so far, we haven't even been able to find or locate where they come in.
Why is that possible? Why could, why, why were they not able to find ours to shut off before the hurricane? I mean, why is there no diagram of where the sewer lines came in, where our homes, where they could have been held?
There is typically a cleanout of the house, where you could go in and look at it, because there isn't a cleanout on those triplexes, and the two houses that cross the street don't have a cleanout. And all that plumbing is on private property. We don't maintain what goes on once it goes on to someone's property.
So we're just basically SLO, because it was a command hole?
We're trying to find out where it connects, so we can come up with a solution. But this time, I haven't even found where it connects into our system. Because it looks like it was connected in the side yard, not out front, to the main system. And we didn't connect it, I mean, I'm going to find a solution to find out why or where it's connected, but...
And then when that is said and done, when is the sewage actually going to be corrected, so it's no longer coming out of the manhole, going into homes and in the road and in our yards?
I think we've got to find out first what's causing your problem, and then who's responsible for your problem, and then we'll sit down and figure out how to fix your problem.
What do you mean, who's responsible? I have video of it coming up from the manhole in the street.
And that's not unusual, you know, San Mill in Orlando, they had wastewater pulling up and pushing up through manholes across the state because of the hurricane, so it's not even Sunlake. But we're looking at it, trying to find those end point connections, and we did it and plugged those two houses that I knew had an issue, and I didn't find out about the triplex until after the hurricane.
No, you knew right after the storm, the 16th, when I checked on the 17th, and then came to the board meeting two weeks ago. Because I knew, my neighbors just bought in April that this happened to. So we didn't know we had to contact you, we just got the insurance company.
It's an anomaly with those three houses across the street and with that triplex, because there weren't any other backups on your entire street or that whole area, so what's going on?
And that's what I mean, it's within just us six. And that's what is, I don't understand, I mean, we're on the opposite sides, why is it happening on two sides?
And that's the only place on that street that that happened. So I haven't, I don't have a solution for you yet, because I have to find out where the lines are.
But you're going to look into it, try it, and it's going to get fixed?
We're going to, we're going to address it.
We're going to look into it, identify the problem, and then figure out how to fix the problem, and find out who's responsible for it. I need to know that, too.
Okay, the next one, it's going to entail some middle school drama, I apologize, and it all stems because myself and my different friends, Mary Ann, who are here, do not want to be friends with the Garzas, I think is how you pronounce her name, Lisa Marie and Gilbert, in Tiana, Marie Hall.
What are we talking about? I'm not talking about that right now, Mary Ann, that's on the agenda to talk about later.
Oh, that's later, in this?
It's on the agenda, yes, yeah.
I just remembered that.
The last two parts I have, want to speak on the green loop, so I guess we'll wait until we hit, you want to wait, you want to wait until it hits the agenda?
Yeah, on the green loop, someone will hear. Next.
That's it.
Is there anybody else in the audience who did not sign up, would like to speak? On something that's on the agenda?
From the town president, just a quick one, maybe a suggestion, just maybe a suggestion, would be to have a special meeting, which I think you can do, to kind of inform these people of the progress of what is transpiring as far as what you find out, what the solutions might be, and what the impact of the district is in or themselves. I listened to this last time of meeting about the people having flooding, as well as sewage coming up, and I suggested at that time, maybe that $6 million, if you can do the SRF fund, to do the back ditch cleaning, maybe should be more appropriated towards some of the other ditch cleanings, who collect them here. Just a special meeting, maybe, and help them out to understand what the process will be.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. George Bunnberg, I used to live on Metanze where the manhole flows out there in 2004, 2005. Under Jerry Bentley, had that manhole blew out again, Chris, and the houses across did the same thing. So I'm not sure, you know, that's a main right there, I'm not sure the, some of the tanks on the streets into that don't drain in about that same location. And maybe it overflows, because it did it 20 years ago, the same problem happened, so there's some dramaticity going right there.
And it's infiltration, I'll touch on that very much.
Well, yeah, that's rainwater infiltration, but I'm thinking, with the, with the, we're out of on Mendoza, where we have the tanks, that goes into a main, that main goes into something, another main someplace, it could be right there, because it's always a mess.
Thank you.
I'm aware of that part.
Anybody else? I'm sorry. Either one.
Good morning, my name is Mary Ann Gintana, we live on Calatrava.
You bring the mic to you?
Yes, I bring it down. We had a flood, because when we had the first hurricane, nothing was flooding. Now we have another hurricane, nothing was flooding. But I see that they're drilling, but they pay low. So that comes first, and the ditches that are cleaning, all that.
The golf situation, if nothing is, is not related to your problems at all, that is a different company, putting in assistance for the golf course. It's got nothing to do with drainage, drainage.
What else you paying for?
Where's money coming from to that?
Where is money coming from?
It's coming from the district.
How?
Yes, assessments are covering some of it, no question about it. I'm not going to tell you no. If you go on to speak, you got to bring up the mic, it's all a mess. I have no problems with anybody coming up.
All those trees, the branches, I can't, you know when they pick them up? Yesterday. We had branches on our side, too.
The people working on the golf busters and things don't work for the district. The people who are doing the irrigation system are from a separate country. The district people are picking up stuff as quickly as they can. Did they get it all on the first day? No, they didn't. They're still working on it, there's still stuff that has to be cleaned up.
It's still all over my screen. So how long do we have to wait? God forbid we have another hurricane next year.
Are you talking about debris, or are you talking about your work?
Are you going to do something about the ditch? Everybody that lives on Calatrava, facing the golf, everybody got flooded.
I understand that, ma'am, and we're hearing about it today, and quite frankly, nothing's going to happen today, we're going to get on it and we'll get back to you.
You heard about it, but we had another hurricane, and you still didn't do anything.
Ma'am, I wasn't, that's five years ago, six years ago.
Five years ago, nothing was flooding.
This board was not present five years ago, as it is today.
Right.
There was a board. Like, this board, I mean...
And to my knowledge...
I can tell you, we will address it, that's all I can tell you.
I think you have your meetings in the evening, at 5:00 AM, because mostly everybody that doesn't work, they're retired, how about the people that are working? That is part of the meeting.
We try, I'm not going to get into the schedule of the board meetings. But we have tried evenings before. Nobody showed. The only reason people are showing, and rightfully so, is because of the situation that presented itself a week and a half ago. And I don't blame you for being here, but I can't tell you that it's going to be fixed in 24 hours. I can tell you that we will look into it, and we will come up with a solution and let you all know what we think we got to do.
But I hope you come with a solution before we have another hurricane, because it was five years, and you still didn't do anything, so we're going to wait five more years.
I hope not. Yes, sir.
Roger Magg, going out, I get that 30...
Who do you speak?
Alcantara on the corner.
Yes, sir.
I've been here 34 years, pumping water for 32. They put a pipe under the road, it's slow, and then the water coming back, I can't pump anymore, because you got nowhere to pump it. You, you, you got people working here that aren't qualified to do the job, you better change it.
I can't speak to that.
It's terrible. You, you, you can't believe how many hours, I, I've been whacked for two hours this morning, since 7:00 AM, hurrying down here, that we whacked the whole thing up. It's below, it's below the water line. And we get, most of my water comes off, Calatrava, number 16 golf course, Old Medalla, and everything, right Mr. Earl. And nobody does nothing. I need somebody to come down, even take a look at it, bring the engineer down. He's the one that designed the pipe, it's too low. I built it up half, I built the pipe up halfway, covered it, to get most of the water out. Nobody covers, nobody cares. That's all I got to say, we better start hiring.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone, Frederick Sins, the Monian Course has, I'm very disillusioned, I've only been here a little over a year, and I thought this was new, when maybe we had some excess sludge, which apparently is in my drain. And I had asked the district if they could just put a heavy-duty chemical to clear out the drains, I have sludge probably about three, four inches thick, maybe more, so I'm not sure. But it seems like a simple solution, just to get some heavy chemicals through the drains, and let's maintain them. and let's maintain it. You know, when I moved here, I understood I was paying assessment fee, and it says right on there, it includes your drainage, proper drainage, not backup drainage. And everything flooding, I, I almost want to cry that you're paying all this money to be protected. I've got a sign out in front of my house that says, "Security twenty-four seven." I'm not worried about somebody breaking in, I'm worried about us all flooding, and that's not covered. So I'm just appealing to the board, could we get some powerful chemicals through those drains because I did a little sample and a small amount of chemical can remove that sludge and it's not possible? Can we at least address that issue?
I, you're going to hate me for this, I can't permit giving you anything at this point until I hear from somebody more qualified than I am in determining how to fix your problem. So I'm not going to tell you.
I'm just here to present a concern, that's what we're here for, but my other concern is this, what's happening with the FEMA money?
First.
Where is the FEMA money going? We're considered a flood issue.
Well, first, after the hurricane, we just registered for public assistance, and you have to go in and have any repairs approved by them, you pay for it, and they reimburse you for it, but we're on the list and they're coming out to inspect the nine hundred feet and bail payment in some areas and that, but we're in the process, but.
That's good to hear.
As far as seeing any money, you know, you're looking at six or eight months, like I said, you have to go fix it, pay for it, and then they reimburse it.
Okay, but at least that would give homeowners comfort and encouragement.
Yes, and we also put some information out in the email blast for homeowners can apply for up to twenty-five hundred dollars worth of flood assistance over, over website.
Yes, but I just know that there's allocated FEMA monies to do major improvements here.
We're in the process.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
No other public comment? Okay, so what I'm hearing is that we have a serious problem on Calatrava that has to be addressed.
Yeah.
I'm hearing, I hope you can halt the applause, it's okay. And then I'm hearing also that there's a problem on Manor Manor with the lines that go to sixteen Green on Deer Run. That's all I've heard today. Anybody else have a problem with drainage that we need to look into immediately? Yes, ma'am? Is that a wave or you?
No.
You're coming up?
I didn't want to bring myself today, but since we're in the mood of flooding.
You're going to have to state your name and speak into the microphone, please.
I'm sorry. Yes, my name is Lisa Marie Garza, I'm here on another situation, but over the hurricane, my house flooded with sewer. And in the back of our house, there is a big open field, I don't know if the septic tanks were located in that area, but only three houses, my house and our neighbors, Chris came by to take a look at it and I'll send damaged stuff for them, but when we went to our insurance company, of course they have a five thousand dollar cap, and we have over twenty thousand dollars worth of damage done, which we're in the process of trying to get the drywall card. You know, I, I thought maybe, you know, progressive would be better at, you know, handling a biohazard instead of a flood, but they don't take that seriously, the sewer, so we're just having a problem with the sewer, and I just wondered if somebody could come to look at our backyard where it's dipped in and see if those were where the septic tanks of all the old, old, you know, septic tanks are sitting.
What's your, what's your?
Because that's where it was pouring out from.
What's your address, ma'am?
It's four one two seven.
I'm sorry.
Forty-one twenty-seven Navarre Avenue, Sebring.
Yeah.
Well.
You've spoken, haven't you? I've been by your house, haven't I? Yes, sir.
I, I don't know.
Yeah, you've been by your house and I went to your house. Okay, I'll have.
I, I got everything pretty much settled with the insurance company, so we're trying to get people in to remodel right now.
So you want to know about the septic tank in the back?
Yeah, because I'm remodeling, I don't want to re-flood my house and have to do more, you know, work in the future because this is not.
Okay, I'll have.
Great. Okay, thank you so much, I appreciate it.
There's no trouble.
Ms. Swanson, it's twenty-eight oh eight, I'm not going to go into a lot of details here because everybody knows what a disaster I'm facing on my potential upon in front of my house, but I will say this, I think what probably might be a better approach to this would be get everybody's information down, get somebody to give you some kind of price to fix all, everything, and then decide whether people are willing to pay for it, one way or another. You may have to have an extra assessment for a couple of years, I don't know, but as far as I'm concerned, I know they do that, but let me tell you something, you don't do anything for free. With inflation, it's going to get more expensive. And I just think that, I don't want to pay more, but is it worth it to me to get better water? Is it worth it to me to get all the drains fixed? Is it worth it to me to not be in here bitching about how much? I got a drain beside me, comes from seven drains, they start out by Manor, Manor Road. Seven drains go into a drain in my front lawn and it's completely plugged, it has been plugged since a week, I still got water out there, my wife was, she says I can't go out there, it stinks. My only point is, why don't you come up, you can list the problems all day long, it's not going to accomplish anything, how about getting somebody here and let everybody complain about their shoulder, somebody, what it all is, and get together with some engineers and find out what would be the cost to do the damn job in the next six or eight months?
Good idea.
And it would cost money.
That's kind of what we're talking about.
And I, I just think, you can't, everybody's kidding themselves, they think this will be free.
Okay, thank you, sir. Anyone else? We will get back to all of you on the drainage issue as quickly as we can, and I can't keep you a date on that, but we will promise, I promise you, we will get you an answer, you won't have to wait till the next hurricane, hopefully. Okay. You want to, Scott, you want to take it from here? Scott is our, this is not for talking. Commissioner from, Kevin.
Good morning, staff and residents. Yeah, a lot has changed since last time I spoke to all of y'all, certainly Hurricane Ian certainly didn't help the situation here. I know we talked last time in September, we received, many areas in the county received over fifteen inches of rain this is in September. And then Hurricane Ian comes upon us and dumps another fifteen inches of rain in some areas of the county, so thirty inches of rain this county has received in some areas within thirty days. So certainly, I've received a lot of calls in reference to county drainage, as you're hearing today, for your district drainage, and certainly very disheartening, and my heart goes out to many of those people that are affected. You know, drainage systems only have a certain capacity. When they're engineered, they're engineered for a fifty-year flood event, a hundred-year flood event. The governor's mentioned that the state of Florida has predicted that we are looking at a five-hundred-year flood event. I know I spoke with our county engineer about many of the problems that we've had throughout the county, and there's a lot of them, and I can tell you it's going to take millions of dollars to fix. And development continues, you know, the best analogy I can give you, to give you an idea of how drainage systems kind of work in layman's terms, if you turn on the spigot of your kitchen sink, the water flows down the drain pretty freely. If you dump a five-gallon bucket of water in your kitchen sink, you're going to watch it slowly go down. No matter how clear your drainage systems are, the ditch is cleaned out, the culvert's cleaned out, what have you, depending on where all that water is engineered to flow, if the drain is not big enough in the bathtub, it takes a while to get through, and that's why they call it flash flooding. Nothing that any of us like, I've got constituents in Sebring Falls off of Highway twenty-seven that literally have water, have water in their homes. One of the issues there is that we're looking at a master drainage plan to address some of those issues, but the size of the pipes that go up underneath Highway twenty-seven to put the water in Lake Jackson like it was originally designed to do, were not adequate to handle that flow. So it's going to take a lot of work in the future. Certainly those to the south of us, I flew my helicopter to southwest Florida, it was past Sunday, and literally homes underwater, Arcadia area is terrible. Certainly my heart goes out to those people. So as a county, we will continue to work at this, we will do drainage studies, we will try to come up with solutions to fix the most severe problems first, and then address other problems throughout the county as we can. But, you know, in Hurricane Irma, we had, we had fifty-inch culverts that blew out during Hurricane Irma, fifty inches of diameter that blew out during that storm because they simply cannot handle the flow of water. Like I said in the last meeting, one acre inch of water is twenty-seven thousand gallons of water. So if you have one inch of rain over one acre, that's twenty-seven thousand gallons of water. Start doing the math on that with thirty inches of water that fell in this county. So we have ground that was already saturated, that couldn't absorb any more water, drainage systems that were just overpowered because they're simply not big enough to handle that flow of water. So that is what's going to have to be looked at, I'm sure in your district and throughout the county, of looking at these systems and enlarging the capacity of these systems to handle these type of events. And I pray to God that we don't, I thought we were going to squeak by this year without a hurricane, and Hurricane Ian comes along. I myself am traveling to Manhattan, we're having a home down there that is pretty much decimated tomorrow morning to try to dry it in, but unfortunately, it's my second home, it's not my primary residence because many people down there are out of a home. The county will continue to work, as we have FEMA assistance, like you mentioned, you can go to disasterassistance.gov to file a claim with FEMA or eight hundred six two one FEMA, but I suggest if you have internet access, you're probably better trying to do that online, because doing it over the phone, you could spend literally hours on hold, try to get ahold of somebody, and if you've got my luck, you get ahold of somebody and you get disconnected about thirty seconds later. So I would suggest that try to do anything online that you can. As far as debris pickup, we are, our FEMA-approved contractors are in the county doing debris pickup, they will be by locations more than one time, so if you miss them the first time, as we've stated, please keep your vegetative debris separate from your household garbage. If you have plastic bags that you have put weeds in or things like that, keep them separate from your vegetative debris. If you've got it piled up with your tree limbs and things like that, the contractor cannot pick those up because the county is going to take the vegetative debris and mulch it and use it as landfill cover and some other things that we can utilize that for in the county. So please keep that in mind. They will be by your house, they have not only their trucks, but they have scouts that are going around and they're going to check every street, and when they've made it through your, through your community here, they will check them again to make sure that they have things picked up. So please be mindful of your garbage and keep it separated the best you can, keep it, try to keep it from any trees that are low overhanging over there because they've got the claw truck that they've got to be able, keep that in mind when you're piling up your debris, make it as easy as you can for that claw truck to get to it and get it picked up. I encourage all your citizens to either follow us on our county website, which is Highlands with an S, highlandsfl.gov, we constantly update that every day with any new information that we have, or on social media, Facebook, you can follow Highlands County Board of County Commissioners, common government, we also share the same information there, and it is all updated daily. You know, we will continue to move forward, my last report, that we're down to about one percent of people in the county without power, so about three hundred some odd people, and that will continue to improve. A lot of those were in some very rural areas, a lot of those served by Glades Electric Company. So a lot of that, some of the messes that were made out in those rural areas, rural areas were certainly a lot of tree debris, a lot of stuff that brought down, a lot of lines that had to be repaired before power could be restored to business, so certainly thoughts and prayers go out with everybody. To county, we will continue to do what we can do to fix drainage problems. I'm a taxpayer, just like everybody else in this room, I pay county taxes like you do, and you folks are paying premium district taxes. And I'm sure you've seen the same, there's nothing government-funded or district-funded, everything is taxpayer-funded, okay? We will always look for opportunities to access grants through FEMA, through water management districts, what have you, to address these kind of issues to try to help offset the cost. But unfortunately, some of these things are going to come to the cost of the taxpayers. That's where the funding comes from. So we're fortunate that we have, that FEMA in Washington has approved that we're going to get one hundred percent reimbursement for hurricane cleanup, so we will not be tasked with making up any difference, in the past that has been anywhere from eighty to ninety percent, but they have committed to a hundred percent of covering the cost of the cleanup. Like your general manager said, you know, we have to keep track of all these records, we have to submit these bills to FEMA, we pay them first, then we get reimbursed. I can tell you, and I think they learned a lot from it, Hurricane Irma took the county almost two years to get reimbursed completely for everything that we had out of Hurricane Irma. So we have to be patient with that, we have money reserved in the county to cover those expenses, and we will keep things moving forward, we will get the county cleaned up as quick as we possibly can, and I certainly understand frustration that each and every one of you have, some of you have been here a long time, I've heard, some haven't been here so long. When you come down here, I don't know, some of you just got here, your timing probably wasn't the best, but certainly Hurricane Ian created a five-hundred-year flood event. Water flows from the north of our state to the south of our state, and the state and the water management districts are working diligently to try to keep drainage open, to keep the water moving south in the state of Florida. The extreme volume of water, okay, is a big concern of the state even over a week after this storm, because water continues to flow from the north to the south. So there is areas that are still seeing rising water a week after the storm, simply gravity, water flows from high ground to low ground, so certainly continue to keep those of your prayers that are south of us, because there is some, I've grown up here forty-six years, I've been through a lot of hurricanes, and this one here, especially in southwest Florida, has totally devastated that area, and will take years and years and years for, for some of these repairs and some of this stuff to get back to normal, so certainly continue, like I said, thoughts and prayers go out with everybody, and we will continue to work as hard as we can to try to come up with solutions, I've got faith in your board here, that they will do the same thing. Like your president said, you can identify issues, go out there and see if there's any immediate fixes that can relieve some of these issues, and then look at a long-range plan of what it's going to take to fix some of these things, but I can tell you, you can revamp your, your drainage system here in your community and engineer it for a hundred-year event, a five-hundred-year event, when a thousand-year event comes, any pipe can only drain so much water at a given time. And I can tell you, you're seeing a lot of that in your community, we're seeing a lot of that in our county. You got a thirty-six-inch culvert, a thirty-six-inch culvert only has so much flow rate per minute that you can push that water through there. Anything over that is going to back up into the lower areas, and that's what we've seen in the county and we've seen in our district, so I'll be glad to answer any questions if I can, but if not, I will certainly follow the staff and try to bring you answers back to those questions, but we will continue to work on this, I'm sure as you folks will here also. Thank you.
Any questions from the public?
Yes, sir.
Come up and state your name.
Daniel Gardner, forty-five oh five, Calatrava. I, I want to use Mr. Kerouac, Mr. Kerouac's example of the kitchen sink, your four or five gallons in, the point I made earlier that probably wasn't clear, we live in many places, there's generally a basin, which would be a large basin that the direct water drains into and stays there until it can flow out. I don't see those anywhere in this area, and I've been seeing them in Virginia, I've seen them in Florida, northern Florida has them, it's just, it's just dating out, a large area. It's just, it's just dating out in a large area, the water drains into that, sits there until it can drain off the system. And to me, I'm not an engineer, perhaps that gentleman is, but it's, it looks like not a simple solution, but a major solution to solve a major problem. And without monstrous expense, that I would see. I don't know if that makes sense?
Yeah. I'll just follow up with a quick comment to that, and we're saying somewhat, speaking of a retention pond, very water impoundment or storage area, and I can tell you, there's a lot of money in Florida right now related to not only water quantity, but water quality, okay? So there's funding out there, especially on the water quality end, if y'all watch the news, the blue-green algae and some of the challenges the state has had. Because the most ideal thing for the state now is not to have the water run into lakes and rivers and tributaries that end up going into our estuaries and things like that, okay? The idea is to try to wholesome of this water, let the nutrients settle out of this water before it passes on. I'm working on a deal in Sebring Falls, like I said, that we're looking at some property to the west, a landowner possibly has ten acres or so that we, that we may look at purchasing there to create a water impoundment and storage area. Because yes, the water all has to go somewhere. So certainly we will continue to work with your staff and work with Chris here, that if there's any funding that's available when it comes to water quality. But you know, at the end of the day, like we're doing in the county, you will be tasked with hiring an engineer to come out here and do a study. And that study could take six to eight months for their, up to a year, okay, for them to do a drainage study. That's where doing some of these studies in the county. And then they, then, then we will get the study back, we will look at it, the study will recommend what the fixes need to be, we will come up with a construction plan to put it out for bid, then we'll look at what those costs are. And depending on whether it is a county maintained drainage easement, or if it's something that's in an individual neighborhood that was never adopted by the county, what would happen then? We would create what's called an MSBU, Municipal Services Benefit Unit, and the county would go out and borrow that money, and we would make those repairs. And on your non-addition charges on your tax bill, like where your solid waste and your fire is there, you would have an MSBU for, for a neighborhood that would address your drainage, and it would be a drainage, drainage charge or something, maybe fifty dollars a year for the next twenty years, what have you, for residents, whatever it takes to service that debt. So those are, there are several different ways that these things can be done. But also, you know, there's a lot of water quality money in the state of Florida, and drainage, and stormwater drainage is tied very closely to water quality. So I'll continue to work with your staff, and anything that we can come up with to help and facilitate you folks also to apply for grants, I assure you that we will do that and will help the best we can.
Got another question for Scott?
Yes, sir.
I appreciate us addressing the five-hundred-year and one-hundred-year and such, but Sun and Lakes has an every-year problem. Calatrava is a constant problem. What I'd like to see, I really think that you'd probably eliminate the majority of this room, if there was at least some way of holding that water or draining that water off of streets that are flooding today. That's the problem on our street, is there's nowhere for the water to go.
We'll look into it, and that's all we can do today.
And I, and I appreciate that, thank you, I appreciate it. But we've already heard that.
Well, the best I could do.
I even brought it up at the, at the heavy rain, and somebody, a very nice man, I don't even remember his name, but there was somebody I spoke to who was wonderful about treating me nicely. And he'll come out and do something about it, well, nothing was done. So I mean, it's just a matter of, it, 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 hurricane season ain't over, so there's some areas that need to be.
Same, sir. Yes, sir. State your name. Speaking to the mic.
John Walsh, forty-six hundred, Calatrava. All I want to say is, I think someone needs to physically go and back, look at it. I understand what you're saying, involving a lot of projects around the country. I live here, not exactly in this town, down the road, but it's real simple. You just need to clean the drains and maintain them. We'll take it from there. You can do all the plans, that ain't going to help the situation. The next rain, we managed to get through this. Those drains were being cleaned, the four inches that went in everyone's home probably wouldn't have happened. Let's start with immediately maintaining and cleaning it out, just need to think of it out. And then we work together with a long-term plan, but you have to do that.
Okay. Thank you. Is this for Scott, or can I let him go? Is this for Scott, is this for Scott, or can I let him go?
Hi, Scott.
Am I allowed to comment? Is this for Cliff, or is this for Cliff?
No, this is for Sonny Blake.
Oh, you're very good. We just wanted to let you know, I'm staying here. Yes, you can comment on the son.
If I can just make a brief public acknowledgement, Scott. The people in the EOC, the county staff, we sent out an email last after the worst of the storm, and they came to our assistance greatly, the staff in the EOC, the people at Duke Power, some of our contractors that came out, you know, when the wind was howling and addressing issues there. I gave an acknowledgement to all the residents, that email last about the assistance provided by the county and Duke and all the participants, and I just wanted to thank you from everybody for the help.
Thank you all for that.
I'm Cliff Wood, President of Manor Hill. I'm also on the Rocky Boys Association Board. So we get quite a few calls that probably misdirected, but they come to us complaining about the drainage issue. One of the things that I've learned as part of this process is that, and I can't speak to Calatrava or any of the other subdivisions, but in Manor Hill, the drainage system is designed so that in the easement, just inboard from the, from the street, the design is to create small impoundment areas between the driveways, such that under normal conditions, the water would drain from the lot in the street into those containment areas between the driveways, and then either evaporate or infiltrate into the soil. That works pretty good under ordinary circumstances, but during a hurricane, obviously, the system gets overwhelmed. The, in these, one of the areas in Manor Hill that has the most serious problem is the northwest corner of Monza Drive. And that area, when I look toward the south from that northwest corner, many of the lots, when they were, did the final grading, did not create that little containment area. And as a result, all of that water was drained down the street toward the north, and it all collects in that corner. And, and the people there that live in that area are driving in water up to their hubcaps under the storm conditions. And that also happens in the back of my lot. There's red hedges and things like that built toward the west of my lot, which is on the northeast corner of, of Monza Drive. All the water from Manor Hill, from Manor Drive, from the south drains north, and then goes into a catchment basin and goes under the street, goes underneath the lots there, and then there's a catchment basin, basement in the northeast corner of my lot, the water then comes up in that, in that catchment basin and drains over toward the west. And because of those hedges to the west, lots of all that water. It's not a major problem, and, and we, we live with it. But if there's an area in Manor Hill that needs some attention, it's the northwest corner of Monza Drive. And, and the code, I think, requires that those little mini catchment areas between the driveways be created in the final grading of the lot. And many of those are not either, they don't conform to that requirement. As a result, all of that water from the south drains into that corner, and there's, there's a vacant lot there in that northwest corner between Manor and, and Monza. And Dennis Watson and Rod Archer have water right up to their front doorstep during this period, and they have a legitimate proof, I think. And I think that would be readily and fairly excessively taken care of if the, if those catchment basins were created as they should have been in those lots to the, I think, south in the northwest corner of, of Monza Drive.
I put that on my list.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other, any other public comments? Okay, to the action agenda. Hurricane Ian damage assessment and remediation, I think that would be you.
Yeah, I would say I would try and keep it to five-minute summary of some of the things that happened during the storm, starting with, I think, everyone knows, the water plant went down about midnight, turned into a real issue. Of course, we, we didn't have a line break, but it's lost pressure from the control system malfunctioning in the water plant. Power was on there, the backup generator functioned fine. It turned into a real issue for the hospital because they didn't have any water for their chillers, and without that water, they can't air-condition the hospital, and they were literally looking at evacuation plants to get the patients out at that time. So it was a serious situation, and they sent a couple members of their physical plant team. We had our folks out there one in the morning working on it, you know, drove through when to get there, and after a while, got the plant working on manual mode. And after about an hour and a half, got it working on an automatic mode. And it was just a failure in the control system. And unfortunately, it was a bad ground wire coming through a rusty old exhaust plant on the roof that was wired into the one-tent system that took the whole thing down. And I also had somebody call and say, why don't you turn on your emergency interconnect with Avon Park? And I said, well, that's good, it is an emergency interconnect, but that depends whose emergency it was. And Avon Park had two, their three water plants down during that hurricane time, and they weren't going to send any water our way. So we were pretty much on our own, and luckily, we got it back up and running, and of course, they took steps to alleviate it, but it kind of shows that we point assistance maintenance. We had a huge problem, and I was standing in Scott because the power went out at the wastewater plant twenty-three. And that plant went down, and we have a big emergency backup generator for it, and after about three hours, that generator went down. Whether it was a phase or a lightning strike, that there was six of the fifteen control bins burned up and the wireless use together. So we had our major wastewater plant that had no power on either side. We called into the EOC and Duke out, but by the time that situation got resolved, and we did have one of our vendors come out very next morning and started working on it to get it repaired. And we probably discharged close to a million gallons of untreated wastewater from the manholes on Florida Avenue. If we would have sealed those manholes, all that would have backed up into the houses and the system. On the good part, where all that wastewater went was really to wetland area, tidal area. We put disinfection down, lined down, and notified the state reporting points and the FDEP of what happened, and we're alleviating that. We're taking some samples out there now, but we don't have any long-term pollution because thanks to the hurricane, everything went through there, it was so dilute, it wasn't like having raw sewage coming out. But that's something we'll have to deal with. Since then too, we had three breaks in the wastewater course name, it was one out on the golf course yesterday on Poncelena. We excavated that hole, and the entire course name was almost totally blocked due to sand coming into the system. So we got that repaired and cleaned out. The golf course was repaired and cleaned out, and right now, we have the water main that suffered damage that's leaking out on Sun and Lake Boulevard that we borrowed the parts for, and you can see us out there excavating that. The storm just pushed a lot of these systems to the tipping point. Well, we're out there correcting the number issues right now and, and working to correct them on the stormwater side. We have facilities planning in the works that we're getting ready to submit to the DEP. We've done a preliminary job to allow us to borrow six million dollars, low interest, long-term federal money, funnel through the state to address some of these drainage concerns. And that's how the water moves from the east to the west and ends up in that large drainage basin called the reserve and the back that it has to get there. Mr. Albig made a point one time, why aren't you, why are you looking at addressing all these pipes where there aren't any houses? Well, all those pipes and ditches take that water from the east or this populated area of Sun and Lake out to the west. So those drainage ditches and those pipes need to be reconned. The amount of water that came through, just like Scott had with the county, it, it started to wash out our drainage system, and our contractor came on again in emergency mode, trucks, with truck full of riprap that we place around the end that keeps taking the pipes out. Because once it takes the pipes out, it takes the roads out. And there's about a thousand-foot section of pavement that's collapsed on in that Alboa area due to that rainwater running at such a high rate, it just takes the soil away. So we're taking steps to correct that, but we're working on the facilities plan for a ten-million-dollar long-term borrowing issue, low interest, to shore up the utility side of things. And right now, we're taking immediate steps, issue a work order to accompany this coming in to replace the debris line manhole. And we popped the manholes this week, and there's just water flushing through them. And it's not raining, and it's not heavy, there's just infiltration coming in there through, we have creative structures that need maintenance. See, the district's gone and put paving patches around where it's cracking, where those structures were settling, but nothing's been done about addressing the structure itself. So on this twenty-seven manholes, and that'll be on Villavella to start that, a little bit on edge of water, and the Tansas will go in there and recoup those manholes, we'll put new rings and risers on them, and repave just around those areas at the top to stop that infiltration. From a utility perspective, that plant usually pumps three-hundred-and-fifty thousand gallons a day during the tropical storm. We had seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand gallons a day during that hurricane, well over a million. And we aren't getting paid to pump that water, we aren't getting paid to treat that water in the wastewater plants, obviously, that's not long-term, it's not going to work. We have four-hundred manholes in Sun and Lake, three-hundred of them probably need work. That's one-point-two-million dollars. But we are moving forward to address the situations with those borrowing issues and maintenance. We got five-hundred-and-sixty-one-thousand dollars the last couple of months of federal money channeled through the county. I'm planning on adding another five-hundred-and-sixty to seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars of utility funds in the capital to address a lot of these needs. And that capital money comes from we double the assessment for connection to the system that's paid for by new residents coming in, so they can pay their fair share of the growth. We increased that rate, we did for the utility costs, five-point-two percent, it's about three dollars a month for customer, but also to help pay for that long-term debt, pay for the repair. So we're taking steps to address it, and I'll have to agree with the gentleman that talked about the drainage. A lot of it's simple maintenance, and it just hasn't been done. So I have a twenty-year backlog sitting on my plate in front of me. So I have a 20-year backlog sitting on my plate in front of me. And that's all I have to say.
Any questions on that? Or any public comment on that? All righty. Next is irrigation project change order to Turtle Run Green Loops. Before we actually get into that conversation, there was a letter from Mr. Halbig that's listed on the, at the end of the meeting. I think we probably should move that up since it pertains to this subject. Introduce that letter first and then have the conversation. Is that okay?
Yeah, the letter speaks for itself.
You don't want?
No, I have that comments to make after you decide what you're going to do.
Oh, so we're just introducing the letter in the record?
Pardon?
So we're just going to put, you don't want to discuss the letter? No?
No. But saying that letter will be discussed when I get up and make comments after this. Do you think the action room?
Okay, so we're going to talk, all right, I'm sorry, thank you. So that's just going to go in the record, Chris?
Yes, we have it. We have it for a fact.
Okay, so we're going to talk about the change order for Turtle Run Green Loops.
Okay, that was a change order. It was brought forward. This was a project that was included in the 24 fiscal year. It was moved up to this year. Reasons behind it is the contractors out there working on a $2 million irrigation retrofit for Deer Run. There would not be immobilization cost, probably save $150,000 in the contractor move costs and continued increasing in that plastic pipe. So that was the impetus to make this happen. That project was not put out to bid. We had the contractor on site. He was basically, we're sole sourcing it through him because we have him under contract and we're doing it as a change order and really looking at the dollar savings as a reason to move forward with it.
Why any motion?
Motion approved.
Set.
All right, so next to motion on the table, does the board have any comments? I just want to clarify the dollar amount. It seems to be, everybody's got a different interpretation. What was originally submitted for the budget to 23, 21 was a number of $550,000. That number was thought to be extremely high. And we had no backup supporting that number. We asked Jimmy Murphy to go out and get a better price so that we knew what we were dealing with. Consequently, he came back with this letter dated, what is it, juice, whatever, saying that they can do it now for $371,000. If we did it this year, if we didn't do it this year, they would tack on another $95,000. It was the estimate as far as what it would cost to do it a year later. So we're not saving $180,000. If we weren't doing this in 371, we're saving $95,000. What would be according to our information, that's what it would cost us next year. We waited. So it's a cost savings to be a record of reality of $95,000. I hope I explained that correctly as far as the numbers go. So this $180,000 savings is not a real number. We go pay on the dollar, so everybody? Any other board comments? Okay, public comments?
Mark Camp, president. I'm going to make my comments and I'll ask that the answers be held until the end of my comments because I'm going to go to the five minutes. I'm not against the green loops. I've already stated that in the past. What I am against is a little bit of like the process of which we're doing this. And the board has currently made their decision long before this change order came today to approve it. And I'm not quite sure how they can do that. Also, just as a little FYI, in that letter, and I can't read that one up there, but it talks about a $2 million project that was done on Turtle Run. Unless you changed it since last night, it is actually the $2 million project is on Deer Run, not Turtle. But at the last meeting, the question was brought up about the green loops and how come $371,000 is going to not go to bid? That's the question we had. And Craig responded to one of them. He said, all these questions about the same thing. You know, how is this happening? And Craig's answer said, you know, essentially, it was proper and what we did and the procedure was not going to bid. And we're going to go forward with the green loops, which didn't really answer the question, how can you circumvent the bid? And then it was reviewed and our attorney then stated that it was an understanding that this change order would be coming to the district. And that's the one that's coming today. And there was a little follow-up again on that from Mr. Herrick that we were going to piggyback on the Deer Run proposal. So there's a lot of confusion going on with what we're doing. When I got up and asked the same types of questions, David responded to me, our attorney, and he said, nothing's been done yet. Board only talked about it and has not approved it. A change order will be presented and we have a legal ability to do it, which I believe we have based on the potential savings exception to the bidding process. So I understood that part of it. And I asked him, well, where is the information? He told me it was in the purchasing policy for the district. So I asked what the exception is. He responded and he said he was looking into the sole source for piggyback. So once again, I started to look into the policies. And it says sole source and emergency procurement. It says the district allows exemption from competitive process when a determination is only when one source is available. And under the emergency policy, it says emergency allows the general manager to bypass essentially the bid process so that they can handle the emergency because it might impact services. And on the piggyback contracts, it says a deviation from the bid process of RFPs and RPQs are awarded if it's on a state contract or a GSA-type contract or some other contract that you can actually piggyback off of. Then I heard Mr. Murphy get up and he's talked about the GTI. And he said they have the product on site now and can start this job if the board approves it. And I'm saying, why would he even have the product on site? He didn't, he didn't even know he was going to be getting this work. But he can start in a couple of weeks. And that the biggest savings would be the $110,000 that they'll be saving because of the, what do you call it? I'm sorry, the mobilization fees. And as I mentioned, last time we did the green loops on Deer Run, it was a $2,500 mobilization fee. So I have to ask the question, first of all, are there any drawings for this? Because according to the other contract, it required drawings. I don't see any proposed listed prices other than in this package. It does have a list of parts and no prices, no quantities. It's blank. Okay, so is that proper? I don't know. And are we going to do a piggyback? Or are we going to go with a sole source? Because that was the basis, I think, on what they were saying. Also, the contract is, and I'm not a contract attorney, but I can say that the contract specifically calls out that we can, they have the ability to do a change order specific to Deer Run. And the Deer Run contract, and this, and like I said, I'm not a contractor, but it specifically says in there that the word process is Deer Run. So the savings suggested, and Ray has already cleared up some of that, is not, you know, what they say it is. And we don't even know what it would cost to have this job done because we never put it out to bid. Maybe we can get this job done for $270,000 instead of 370,000. So I think it's a little bit remiss on us not to do that. And one of my final statements, attorney, and I only do this because I'm not attorney, reference to 9-98 of the Highlands County ordinance. It's basically states that anything over $25,000 must go to bid with some limited exceptions. And he's addressed those exceptions. He said he believes the exception that we're discussing is to avoid the mobilization cost to the district by using GTI. Therefore, that would be the exception for the GTI to do the Turtle Run Green Loops. But he said it may apply. He didn't say it did apply. So I don't know what the answer is. I'm still seeking those answers. So here's my question. We have no RFP. We have no detailed pricing quantities. We have no drawings. I don't know why GTI had product here even. Is it sole source? Is it a piggyback? And if it is, all I'm asking is to explain to me in layman's terms how we can circumvent all of these other things that I've kind of cited. If it's because of the cost savings, then is it a sole source? Or is it piggyback? Thank you very much. I appreciate your time and I'll reply. I appreciate it and your response. And as a little FYI, it's taking my extra minute here. I want to thank, I want to thank the gentleman, Chris. He did provide me a lot of information that helped me understand a little better what was going on with the Turtle Green Loops as well. As I want to commend the whoever did it. They put the minutes and the audio up on the website. It had been missing for quite some time. And I'm assuming that was possibly you. And it was a great job. Thank you very much. It makes things easier. I don't know why we also don't have a resolution for this, but I guess the board doesn't do resolutions anymore according to the last conversation I had. Thank you very much. I appreciate your time and I'll expect your answers from you.
You want to go first?
Well, I guess the number one question that needs to be resolved or that I need to understand is the timing. Because I understand that this is a time-sensitive issue because of the potential savings for mobilization. So, and I understand that the GTI is out there currently doing work based on an existing contract and went through the competitive bidding process.
GTI is currently doing the irrigation system. They quoted us or the district. What they could do as far as the Turtle Run Green Loops this year, it would cost, they're quoting us $371,000. There are drawings available. There are drawings available. I mean, I haven't seen them, but I know there were drawings.
I know they, I can respond. The drawings you might be referring to, and I don't know. But the drawings that they worked on, the Deer Run, was the?
All Turtle Run, there were drawings for the Turtle Run Green Loops.
There is? Where are they?
But I'm sorry, why do you have to seek, why is that an issue? Just so I understand.
It's an issue because it's part of the original bid requirements.
And Deer Run? Turtle Run is not on here. So we do have plans for Deer Run, which I can submit to you as well. Turtle Run loops were done by Tony Godwin, who was just out there with our chief of destiny. So he did the GPS and then submitted it to Wesco for bidding to GTI for material, less than labor and everything else. So the mobilization fee, I believe, was $75,000. So granted, when you do Turtle Loops, you didn't, or when you did your Deer Run loops, you didn't have all the big equipment out here that you have right now to get down 16-inch mains and everything else. So technically, they could have drove with a smaller machine, but we're still going to have to trench back into the satellites. So Tony came out, did the GPS and figured out where our satellites were based at. And it all row-wired takeoff and everything else. The reason why everything I submitted like I did was because GTI has jobs lined up at the end of November and that the savings is within staying here on property. Also, the pricing that we're locked into for Deer Run, we're also honoring that pricing as well. Pricing since we started on pipe alone has went up 25% and 15% on floor price and everything else. So, I mean, do we actually have the pricing in comparison to what we're actually doing right now? We don't, but we know that we're locked into our pricing from 2021. But I will give you guys some critical points.
And I appreciate that answer. That answers a lot of other questions. It still doesn't say that they don't have to redeploy. We're not really saving $110,000 anyway. They're saying we're saving $110,000 because of the mobilization. Well, they're not going to do any mobilization this year. And they'll charge us?
Are they really getting this $110,000? It's not $110,000?
Well, it does say, and he stated it was $110,000.
It's $95,000. It's right here in Michael Wood.
I'm just saying, they sold the idea on $110,000. It could be $95,000. But my understanding is the reason we're doing this exception is the savings for the mobilization. Whether it's $95,000 or $110,000, we're not doing any mobilization at all. And that, I believe, and maybe David can help me with this. His statement was that is part of the exception. The money that we will save as a district at $95,000 or $110,000, which is a fallacy. We're not really saving it unless we wait it until next year. And if the charges for mobilization were $95,000 or $110,000, I understand that. But when you can get, he doesn't even need the equipment he has here. So you can't talk about mobilization and any, whatever that figure is, $95,000 or $110,000. That's what you're predating the award on. The savings that you will get by not bidding this. That's what it says. And that's what I think. And I don't want to put words in David's mouth. Is that not what you're saying?
Yes, that is my understanding, is that we have, the GTI is currently here doing work under a contract that was bid. Is that not a correct statement?
Yes.
Yes, okay. So we have an existing contract that was bid for them to be here and do work.
Yes.
The plan was, was to do these green loops at a later date, correct?
Year later.
So by doing them, by using a change order and doing them now potentially, we are doing, we're doing something that we were planning on doing anyway. If we did it when we originally planned to do it, it would cost us $95,000 more.
Of course, yes.
Based on, yeah, based on the information that's been provided.
Yes.
So that's the, we have an existing contract that can be piggybacked off of. It went through the bidding process. The contract that we're, they're currently operating on.
Yes.
So if this, using a change order, doing something now instead of doing it next year, that provides us with a $95,000 savings because if they were to do it next year, it would cost us $95,000 more for them to remove us. That's my understanding.
That is correct, if we were to do it with this company.
Yes, exactly. So the question then becomes, is so if we put it in, potentially, if we don't do it now and we put it out to bid, and this company is going to submit a bid, that is going to be $95,000 more than we can do it for right now. So the question becomes is, is it, is it, can we, by putting this off, are we going to save more than $95,000?
I have a question. Did you just not say we have also been guaranteed the product at?
If you read, if you read the letter that's presented, it says labor and materials.
Labor and materials.
Okay, that has nothing to do with the mobilization.
You're going to say money here too.
Correct. If it, if I come back, the $95,000, it's going to be that plus the mobilization.
Exactly.
Mr. Camp, it might be $3,000. You know, who knows what it's going to be? I mean, we, we don't know until you put it back out to bid or whatever. But again, the price has changed, you know. His labor might be higher than what he's charging us right now.
And once again, I don't want to belabor this. It's, it's, you know, he said, she said, or whatever. I understand the pros and the cons of why we should do it and why we shouldn't do it. Okay, I'm more concerned about the process by which one did it, okay? And also, we have no idea what somebody else would have bid. And I use that from past history. In 2019, they came in, GTI came in at $333,000 to do the green loops over on Deer. The winning bid was a local company. They did it for $170,000. What in God's name do you not see? That maybe you could put out a bid to these three same people. GTI, if they want to win it, they're going to have to win it on the merits of their bid. But no, we're going to jump on a $371,000 commitment. And I know the board has already made the decision, so this is like beating the dead horse. And I don't want to take a lot of people's time. But I think that there are, there are some holes in this. And you've got people on the board that are, doesn't matter what we're going to do here. They're going to vote to do something for the golf course. Maybe we could take that $371,000 and put it someplace else and then defer the green loops for a couple of years. And yes, the prices might go up.
Green loops, do it.
The prices might go up, but likewise, it could go down. And the bid could be a lot lower. That's all I'm saying. Thank you so much for all of this extra time. I really do appreciate it, guys. You've been more than tolerant.
And just, I think the one question that I'd like to see? And just, I, I think the one question that I'd like to see answered is, what is the, I mean, what is the timeframe? I mean, how, how, how long is this window open? Because that's the thing I don't have an answer for.
We, we have to give them an answer probably today, when we want them to proceed. If we don't want them to proceed, then we will have to do what...
The bid.
Camp is alluding to, we have to go, I guess, through the bidding process, start all over again, possibly get it done, won't be done this year, sure. Because it would take that long just to do a bidding process, depending on the company that we awarded to and what the price is, probably be next fall. So, the timing comes into play, and the cost comes into play. And, and why do you have a board? Let me ask you guys that. Why is there a board? The board's gonna make the decision. I don't expect everybody in the audience to agree with everything the board decides. But why do you got a board?
Based on the...
We could do a popular vote on this, if you like.
Let's say, based on the, the facts that I've been given today, and as I understand them, yes, I think that we have the ability to, you can call it sole source, call it piggybacking. We have an existing contract with this contractor that went through the bidding process. They were the, I'm assuming, the low bidder on what they're, for the work they're doing now. That's why they have the job. So...
I understand the concerns. This is a break from the way we positionally have done things. That's correct. I don't disagree with that.
Did we do...
Did I ask for a legal opinion?
Wait, legal opinion?
I have a question. I'm in the middle of talking, for God's sakes.
Well, I want a legal opinion written.
My, my.
That's all?
Can I finish my statement?
Yes, yeah.
I understand that there are some people that don't think we're doing this the right way. And I appreciate that, okay?
Dave Albig, Dave Albig resident. The $95,000 on, in footnote on this bid that was given to a true employee, not the general manager that should have had him, is somebody with a financial interest in this thing. He's trying to bypass the bidding process by getting this job, and nobody else is going to get the opportunity. And you're gonna try to do it with a change order. And the contract, by the way, this is a very good contract that was written, and I doubt very much if, David, did you write this contract?
The contract with GTI?
This contract with GTI.
Yes.
I didn't think so, because it's, it's too good. It's too good, okay?
Nice, David.
But this contract, this contract does not allow for a change order. And I've got, I've got, do you have a copy of the contract with you, David?
I do not.
Okay, I've got page one and page two in the wall, so you have the ordinance. Okay, we have all the, we talked about. I'll keep you in touch.
Did you hear, have you read?
I continue your answer.
Oh, this is, this is our general contract. This is our...
While he's reading that, I'm gonna stop the meeting for a minute. David, would you give Mr. Camp an answer on what we, is what we doing legal or not legal?
What, as, as, as far as approving the change order? Or potentially approving the change, I've already given that, yeah.
Say it again, that's what he's...
We have the ability, let's say, based on the, the ordinance, we have the ability to avoid, it is an exception to the competitive bidding process if we can piggyback. We have an existing contract that went through the competitive bidding process that we can piggyback off of.
Okay. Is that it? Wait, he cut in on you. Is that it? Is that what you wanted? He wants it. What do you want?
I, I have no reason to disagree with what Dave just said, okay? I would like to see it in a written opinion, so that at least there's some form of a record. That if somebody comes back and says, we had no opportunity to bid this, but we did a, they did a piggyback. I don't see why that is a problem.
Part of the record now.
Okay.
It's part of the record?
It's part of the record, okay. You can do that?
It's part of the record. Yes, it's part of the record.
Okay. In, in first page of this contract, there is a paragraph called "work", and it said, "The work shall consist of everything necessary to complete the project as described in the deer run golf course RFQ 2021-06-0." Okay? And the second page of this contract, there's a paragraph called "change order".
Okay.
Okay. "The district without invalidating the contract may order change orders in the 'work', the 'work' in capital W, within the general scope of the contract." This contract does not allow you to do a change order. You can do it any other way you want to do it, but this contract doesn't allow that. Now, if this guy said it is, and I know that, that the board's helped it, to bypass every policy on the bidding, and we got an attorney that's gonna cover for you. That's not right. It needs to go out to bid. Whether it's come this year or next year, whether the price comes in higher or lower, it doesn't make any difference. You gotta follow the policy. And trying to worm your way around it doesn't work. Just because this guy's here, and he's got a vested interest in doing this, baloney. Okay? This $180,000 is what you got through guys' attention. That was a cock and bull story. If we were gonna, if, if Jimmy Murphy wouldn't have got up there and said $180,000, you wouldn't even have paid any attention to it. That's what got this thing started, because somebody told you a mistruth. Come on. How am I saying? Thank you.
You're welcome. And it was never $180,000. I've only said it 17 times.
Come on. I'll tell you what I'll do. I'll send you the transcript that he said it was $180,000. Matter of fact, I can give you per, you want me to read it or quote it?
No, I have. Quite frankly, I think I've given you guys enough time on the subject.
You have. I appreciate it, and I told you I appreciate it. But I think it's an important thing to follow the policy.
I understand you two guys don't have, don't agree with anything that we're doing in this particular issue. And I appreciate it, and I understand it, but we're gonna go forward, and we're gonna take a vote, and we're gonna decide, you know?
And, and I, like I said at the beginning, I know what the answer, what you guys are gonna do. I know how the board makeup is.
I know, but if I don't take a vote, we'll be in big trouble.
I doubt we already voted.
We already voted.
We already voted this.
No, we didn't.
We did not vote this.
Cal State resident. I'd like to make a request to have as detailed minutes as we, as we can that would completely describe this conversation, just in case it ends up in court.
It's, uh, there's an audio.
Can we do that? Can we do that? Can we ask that we get complete, as complete as possible, minutes of this meeting, so that the paper, the written minutes, can stand up and talk to you in court, if it goes to court? If there's a challenge, a legal challenge, an injunction, any type of a legal action...
We have the audio, we have the audio recording. We could make that into a transcript that we had to.
But we don't know until it's all set down, somebody sits down at the typewriter and creates it, how many minutes have not appeared on the, in, in, in print? Because the, are you saying, no, we cannot have?
No.
I'm not, I'm saying we have an audio of the meeting. Is that not...
How many meetings have we had in the last year that the audio didn't come through? We're depending on an audio to do, to do our workforce. This, this district has been here for almost 50 years now. Over the past 17 years while I've been here, our average minutes are 30 or 40 pages long. Most recently, we've been getting minutes here that are six to 10 pages long. Their parents, they don't say who voted how. How do we know how our supervisors think on a project? All we do is get a score. How many voted for, how many voted against. In the past, we've also always had who made the motion, who made the second, and how each individual supervisor voted. For some reason, we don't get that anymore. But I'd like to return to the way it was when it was working. And also, I'd like to have as clear documentation of this meeting as possible in case it ends up in court. It has happened many times since I've been here in the last 17 years, that there are court actions that take place when the policy is deviated from. Thank you.
Where's that 15 pages of meeting minutes with motion, second, to vote it out?
I'll take, wait, wait.
On this meeting, that completely. Based on his request, we have him give us the conversation pertaining to the green loops, verbatim on paper.
Sure.
Do we do that?
I want to pay to do that. We also, on that recording, a transcript comes with it.
Let's do accurate transcript of the part of the meeting pertaining to the green loops, so we have it in case we need it.
Here was, it wasn't minutes, because it was 4:1. I was the only one to vote against the green loop. It's all minutes.
Let's get an accurate transcript on the meeting. There any other public comments? Now, we do have to take a vote, and the vote is to do the, what do we call it? The extension of the contract?
For the, the approval or, I guess, the motions to approve the change.
Because we have not done it.
We have a motion.
We have a motion to do that.
We already did.
So, we did that. No public comments, Greg? Let's vote.
Supervisor Gilman?
No.
Supervisor Hurley?
Yes.
Supervisor Phillips?
Yes.
Supervisor Hurd?
Yes.
President Brooks?
Next on the agenda, reconsideration of pool suspensions. Since I was not here at the last meeting, I have no idea why we're doing this. So, somebody suggested that we do this again. And whoever should take this part of the meeting.
You were here.
They just tried to appeal it and told us...
I think this is, I think that is from two meetings ago.
I'm sorry?
I think this is from two meetings ago. This is the...
Last meeting?
Yeah.
No, this is from last, I wasn't here. Apparently, some people got up and talked about this, and they were told we revisited at this meeting. That's my understanding, I wasn't here.
But I think Bob should probably use the...
Well, somebody said we're gonna revisit it. So, who said to revisit it?
Great. It was, they were discussing it during public comment, and they said they wanted to appeal it, and so we said bring it to the next meeting, and it'll be on the agenda.
I can't hear through the mic, please, thank you.
At the last meeting, they talked about it during the public opinion, and we asked them if they wanted to appeal it, and they said yes. And we said we will put it on the agenda for the next meeting.
So, that's what it was, Mr. President Brooks. You were here for the suspension. When they, when the suspension was voted for, the last meeting, when you were not here, they appealed. So, that's what this is officially, the appeal.
So, you're appealing, so I haven't dealt with an appeal yet. How do we handle this?
Well, if anybody wants to make a motion to, you know, reconsider it, and then you can make a motion if there's a second. Otherwise, if there's no motion, no second, there's nothing in this message. The appeals, the, the suspensions have been levied. And it requested an appeal, so if anybody wants to make a motion that you discussed, reconsider it and appeal, then they can make that motion.
Well, in all, are the people here? I don't know who the people are. In all, in all fairness, the people, since they think we're gonna talk about this, I guess we ought to give them a very brief moment to talk.
I make a motion that we, uh, listen to it.
It will only take a couple seconds.
Just a minute, ma'am, you got it. We need a motion and a second, I think. I made a motion.
He says, supervisor.
You can step back.
Outside, not to work.
Thank you.
Same.
On the day that, um, the question, um...
Are you one of the people to...
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, um, yes, I am. My name is Mrs. Marie Daugherty.
Okay.
A week, yeah, the, the letter that we received, and I collected all the information, the initial report was Mr. Screw, and that's why I came to appeal on it. It's written out to where it looks like both parties were arguing, fighting, which was not true. The Vashers, if you look up the statements, the Vashers in the back over here were the ones who came and ruled and started everything, said everything. No one else said anything to them. We, we set fire. And we ended up to where we got kicked out of the pool for their actions. My girlfriend, who was also here, was verbally attacked. But at that time, there was a fight going on in the parking lot, and there was shooting, but, you know, gunshots. So, Cheyenne was doing something else. I was out in the parking lot when I waved over to them. They flipped birds at me, and Mrs. Vasher said something crude. I won't even say what she said. And it ended up to where she walked into the, um, entrance of the lobby and started screaming at my girlfriend, Tina McQuaid. Then, her husband, I wasn't through this, but my witness, the witness statements of two people that were there with their children. He comes barreling into the cabana area, goes over to the deck panel, and starts screaming at my husband, who pee and half in front of children. And the man next to my husband said, hey, I got children, man. I guess at that time, Mrs. Vasher looked and said, it's none of your affin' business. And, I mean, this is all in front of children. Now, number one, it was said we live next door, we're not neighbors. I just wanted to stop being friends with people like this. This was, I liked to not want to associate with them. I just wanted to be left alone. I thought everything was cool. They go by our house. They could have said something to us at our house, or in our world. They lived 15 houses away from us. They ride a bike ride, they like to flip birds. We just sit there, we take it, we don't say anything. But this has now become to a legal form of the pool because of their actions. My husband remembered that everything, he just sat there. I was leaving the door, and I was outside. But the witness statements well show that these people were the ones who were found. The way you guys would write, you know, I, I can understand how we got kicked out because the way the letter, the initial report was written, it's written totally wrong. It's saying once the, once the, um, us, you know, our victims, it was unavoidable. Nothing was unavoidable. Nothing was ever said to these people. My husband sat quiet. The man got into my husband's face, right into his face, and said, you wanna step like kids? It's ridiculous. We come to the pool to be calm, have a nice time. We don't come here to be harassed by someone that just comes here four months ago and thinks that they're gonna watch a show, and they're drinking, and they're, you know, carrying on in the pool. We don't, we don't have that kind of, uh, relationship. I don't want a relationship with these people. And then they ended up to where, when we stopped, they, they did this. So, I mean, it was stupid for them to do it, and it was immature. But I just don't know when we were initially kicked out, when they were the, the, you know, aggressors.
So, what do you think is fair punishment?
Uh, to let myself and my husband back in for what we haven't done.
You haven't done anything?
And they, we haven't done anything to them.
Okay.
And then December 9th, if they wanna come back to the pool and they're done with their suspension, that's fine. But they did, they were the ones who had statements that have witness reports. There, I, I don't actually know the couple who read witness reports, but I know that they wrote it out. They also, Cheyenne also, you know, was, wrote out her rights. So, it's all in there. It's just the front page that you guys would read was misconstrued to make it look like, you know, it was written wrong to where it looked like there was an argument, or there was, no, not at all.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yes, you will, you must be any Vashers?
Yes.
Here you have it, Robert Vasher. Um, we absolutely, everything she says is completely untrue. We, um...
Let's start out first on September 9th. We walked up to the pool. I never even made it into the pool area. Never went in the pool area. All the confusion outside was fighting. My wife was threatened for the second time, at least eight, twice now. The one woman we just spoke, also 28-year-old woman with death. She was too young. She was wanting to kill people. Now, the argument that ensued after was him.
On top of all this, we were never born. It made one mistake, I admitted, and I apologize to the families I've said in the last meeting. This, these people have been born four times.
Four-worming.
And that's only until we... And that's only until we, there was a problem, trying to stay away from them, then we were suspended along with them. And we never were born. And had two weeks left by before you guys even suspended us. And it's just totally just false.
Totally inaccurate. We have only lived here four months. I don't want...
What do you feel is proper for you guys?
That our suspension should be lifted, absolutely.
I could see a warning. Wow.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate both of you. Yes, ma'am?
I apologize.
I apologize.
Say my name and address again. Amy Strike, 6516, in Hanzus Drive. This is entailing the pool and I will back Mary Ann and Boba 150%. You look at all the paper trails and complaints made from other members entailing Lisa Marie and Tina Marie, you will see the difference in who's up here speaking.
Yes, I am. Yes, I am personally.
Sorry. Sorry. Please, if you're going to speak, you got to speak in the mic or don't speak.
Just going on that, ask any employee that has been behind that window or that counter at that pool. Um, I can't remember exactly what Monday morning, but this is entailing Lisa Marie and Tina Marie Hoyt. I was in the pool with four other members. She was talking. They got done. I decided to do my talking with the members. The way her body language, the tone and what came out of her mouth. Got three other, three of the four witnesses to make a formal complaint as they walked out of the pool. Entailing detailed, two of them now do not want to be at the pool when she is present because they are worried how she is going to react towards them and possibly how they're going to react toward her. This, I'm sorry, it's unfortunate. It is all middle school stuff. And entailing the whole, we try to avoid them. You can ask every member in that pool. We leave the direction they are. Because we don't want to be friends with them because of what they do up at the pool, outside of the pool. They can't get that harassed on life.
Okay.
But something needs to be done. There's been verbal threats. Lisa Marie has done it to myself, to two others, like I said, Tina Marie. Mary Ann and Bob have never had one warning, one complaint. She, I have gotten talking to all the members. Please take this seriously. I feel that you're not...
Am I taking this very seriously? Like this is why we're doing this.
Well, I don't...
I voted on, we already voted on this once.
Well, and unfortunately, you guys voted on it with none of us present. So that was kind of an unfair just vote.
Yes, ma'am.
Because like I said, these two should not have been banned. These three should have.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Yes, ma'am?
Go on. Hi. My name is Tina Marie Hoyt. Um, I didn't have an issue with any of them. I was the one that defended Amy against Mary Ann at the pool in the beginning of July. I come back from being out of town and apparently Amy told him a bunch of lies, which started me and Mary Ann having issues. I tried to talk to Mary Ann that day, Sunday the fourth, but Amy wasn't even here that day. When I went to speak to her, to ask her if there was a problem, because I didn't even know there was an issue. And she said, you know what I'm talking about? I have no idea. I still don't even know what transpired. She won't speak to me as a grown person. I know Amy said something. I have a text message. She admitted lying to her laughing about the comments. It's not funny. I'm a grown person. I've been here over two years. This is my first incident. I never threatened Amy at the pool. I told her to keep her lying now out of my business. That's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Al. Again? I'm sorry. You want to say something?
Hold on, Amy. I want to make sure you do this. When you're looking into it, talking...
Yes.
Prior to making your decision, please ask for all the reports from the pool. Then you're going to see the whole picture.
Thank you.
That's all I'm asking.
That one I can't do. All right.
Then there's, there's, there's two existing suspensions that were already voted on. So unless somebody wants to take a motion to lift one of the others, I'd say it's a decided issue. So that's, it's up to you guys. If anybody wants to...
I just, no, I wanted to just ask something. You guys, you're both accusing each other. No, ma'am. Please, you had a vote. You're both accusing each other. You both made a spectacle of yourselves at the pool, according to people who witnessed it, who had nothing to do with being friends with us. There were grownups there. There were kids there. I mean, you even had to address this. It's kind of sad in itself. And all both of them sad that you had to deal with this.
Exactly.
Both colors.
Exactly.
And I can tell you, I don't see any reason to overturn this. I need to set an example for people misbehaving at the pool. Now, when I say me, I mean the board. Excuse me. The board needs to set, set an example. This can't go on. You want me to go back over the history so I can get her in trouble? She wants me to go back over the history? I mean, come on, guys. There were rules and regulations and ways you should behave at a public facility. What you guys did is not the way to do it. So unless the board has a different opinion, three months it is. No changes. Now, ask the board if they want to re-vote it. Anybody want to revisit this? Nope. No. Three months. We're done. The next subject is... Nope. Okay. Now, it's general counsel report. Do you want to just, do I get it right?
Okay. From Unit 12. Unit 12 stuff. I talked with Mr. Hornick's attorney. They have been working behind the scenes with county engineering and environmental agencies. They spent over $250,000 dealing with hurdle issues, potential relocation matters. They may need up to 50 acres of, of land in order to mitigate. So that's what they're looking into now is, is whether it is, rather than mitigate, have the hurdles or tortures remain on the property. They're looking at potentially relocating. They've been talking to some other developers as well for, you know, meetings.
I'm sorry. I kind of got distracted with what happened.
So yes, the first thing on the, the little, under my sub项...
On Unit 12.
On Unit 12. So, so they are working with, they're working with county engineering. They're working with the environmental issues regarding the tortures. Spent about $250,000 in, in the process. They're also talking with some other developers as far as the additional, the option, the, the potential option properties. Mr. Koppin, the attorney for Mr. Hornick, said that most likely, nothing's going to happen with everything that's been going on with, with, uh, with land prices and real estate issues. Probably going to be the first of the year before anything concrete is done based on what they found out about the, the tortures and the environmental stuff.
You're talking about it as far as them developing the, uh...
Correct. Yeah, correct. Correct.
David, didn't we, uh, okay, uh, some mitigation property for it?
Yeah, potentially. Yeah, potentially. I think that's what, I, I think that what is available to them might, that's what they're saying, is it might not be enough. That's why they're looking into potential relocation.
Okay.
So, so most likely, before we see any sort, and like I said, there's been some, I guess they've had some, some outside interest with, with additional developers. But based on some, it's, the attorney said right now is just talk. But there's been discussion about 50-foot wide lots, about 60-foot wide lots, about 100-foot wide lots. So they're, they're, but it's all just been talk. So as it stands right now, they're, they're dealing mainly with the environmental issues and it'll probably be the first of the year before they come, you know, back to us with any concrete, concrete plans on what may happen with the project.
Okay. Summary list? You got something?
Yeah, like, yeah, I talked about that a little bit when you were here at the last, last board meeting. The stuff that I'm working on right now is the, obviously the popular seats issue, code of conduct, and, uh, the, the, how we're going to maintain, you know, our, our, the powers that we have that are right of way.
Do me a favor. Just, all I'm looking for is an email for you to send to Chris and the board. Just with, if it's five things, just five bullets on what you're working on that you're going to present to the county.
Gotcha. And as I say, there, there, I, I started office hours this week, next week, and then, like, I hate to say, but I...
Yeah, just, just send us an email what they are so we, you know, as far on the same page as you are.
Will do. Will do. And then, uh, 58, it's, it's 5801, not 5901, but 5801, Bernada. We had, there, there has been motion on that. The reason we didn't go about it is because the, the county attorney sent it to the wrong email address. But he, the letter went out to them on September 13th, giving them 30 days to bring the fines current. Fines are over $15,000. Uh, so if that is not brought current by, I guess it would be October 13th, the foreclosure will, process will start.
So the county's going to do the foreclosure?
County will do the foreclosure and it will be started sometime, probably within the next two weeks if they don't bring it current. That's all I've got, Mr. Al.
Sorry about your house. Anything on the meters?
Oh, okay. Yeah, sorry. On the Avanti. Um, Avanti filed its answer, affirmative defenses. It listed a, if I remember correctly, 27 affirmative defenses. I met with Mr. Rhodes yesterday. The majority of those affirmative defenses are what we call legally insufficient or just a little one in life. You know, one sentence, you know, one sentence claims are not supported by any type of facts or anything. So they're, I'm going to be preparing a motion to strike those affirmative defenses with that process moving forward. Um, Mueller, uh, who was named as an additional defendant, filed a motion to dismiss claiming lack of proof. But that's something that's being addressed as well by, by Mr. Rhodes. It's all going to be set for hearing. So it's, it's moving forward slowly.
So you think we're going to get, you think we'll sell?
I, as I say, I think that once the, depending on what happens with those affirmative defenses, and I believe the majority of them will be stricken based on their current, the way they're currently described, uh, we're probably going to get into some settlement negotiations here. Probably after, probably after the first of the year, most likely, the way that is with, because like I say, the, the hurricane has delayed, put some delays in the board as well.
Okay. And, uh, you said you're going to be open hours next week?
I did. Well, I, I was there this week, not quite, because with all the hurricane stuff and, and me dealing with home issues, it's, I was not in there at the times I wanted to be. But it's going to be Tuesdays and Thursdays, uh, you know, basically before, from, from open to lunch.
Okay.
That's the, the window. And so, and, and if you want me to, I can be there, intentionally be there at other times. So if you want, if, if you want to be there at a different time, just shoot me an email. I can make myself a grant on that. That's going to be the general standing is Tuesdays and Thursdays from open to 10:00.
Okay. Any questions? Chris?
Yeah, just briefly, I pretty much covered it in the damage assessment. It's, that's all we've been doing since the tropical storm really is coming out there and repairing and reacting to things. Probably had at least 125 call-ins about sewer alarms going off and then the system being overloaded with water. And the, the staff on the utility side was working 14, 15 hours a day to address the service calls from the hurricane, right? And the new plant operators that we have working spent three and four nights at those plants to ensure they remained operational. Just a bunch of maintenance work. We're going to start moving forward and spending some utility money on utility projects.
Where are we on the...
Bearded?
Let's see. There's so much... We got 561,000. Have we put that out to bid yet?
No, those are individual projects. We have survey work underway at the four lift stations where we're going to put the generators or the, excuse me, the Thompson bypass pumps. Then we've had two vendors in the last week to review the...
So then, how? I'm sorry. I thought we were going to bid out that 561,000.
No, it's, it's, they're all very separate type projects.
It's five different, they're all real, we have prices on one file.
Yeah. And, and, well, we have estimates what we have for the grant money. We'll probably have to add some in. But, you know, the water flushers will just buy ourselves tax exempt and have a contractor put them in. Uh, the control updates, we'll have somebody come in and do, do those. We have two vendors in there right now that reviewed the systems and made recommendations. The big ticket items is bypass pumps. That's being surveyed. We have a piggyback contract on the state where we can purchase those and we just got the pricing in on.
Where, where are we on the hail damage?
Uh, hail damage, we just responded to the insurance company for all the 18 buildings, 15 that had hail damage. Were mostly the golf course bathrooms and the ancillary. They wanted some things like that. We're working on the bid specs right now and hope to get them out, but haven't made any progress in the last two weeks due to the storm.
That's not, that's about 960,000, right?
Yes, they're 966. And then also they have all the information for the business claim for the golf course damage.
How do you bid that out?
Um, just as one large bid with each, each building is a separate project and then you can let firms come in and bid on all of it.
So we're going to put out a bid for 961,000?
Yes.
I think that should be an RSP.
Oh, yeah. It's, it's going to go...
I think it should be online.
Oh, well, we'll put it on DemandStar. Yeah, so it goes out to all the vendors.
I want to know the website or anybody to see it.
Yeah, it's a service online, yeah.
And this, this hurricane thing, we're going to have to claim damages on the hurricane, correct?
Oh, yeah. Columbus, um, some of the drainage improvements and some of it that we've already repaired. We have detailed invoices and pictures, the damage on Columbus. We're waiting for the Fever Rec to come out and take a look at it before we start the repairs. And that again is all reimbursable.
Well, let me ask this. Mike, what, is Mike here? Have you communicated with these guys what, what is going to happen to their, their buildings and their property? I assume you have, right?
Yeah.
So what, what's going to happen to the case of the cart shade? That, I believe had damaged during the, uh, the flood and now has had roof damage to the building from the hurricane. Do we know about how we handle that?
Um, I asked them and we're putting together, you have to have detailed pictures of the damage.
I'm sorry.
You have to have detailed pictures of the damage and also where...
You guys on the same page?
Yeah. I was actually over there yesterday, uh, speaking with them, uh, getting an update. But, yeah, so obviously that cart shade was damaged, the roof was damaged with the hail damage and then that something was damaged again. I was so...
That was from the hurricane, right?
Right.
The hurricane over.
About two points on it. So not sure, you know, Chris is going to be on that pool. I'll follow up with him as he gets more information.
I would like to just see, I, I would, I think the board should be kept updated and know exactly what we're claiming. I mean, there's a lot, there's a lot out there. You got 561,000 for the sewer things. We've got 900 some odd thousand dollars from the flood repair or the hail repairs. We've got, I don't know how much from the, the flood and I don't know how much from the hurricane.
I don't know how much.
But we're, we're, you've got to be close to $3 million, $3.5 million worth of repairs in this place.
Oh, yeah.
Well, I don't, I mean, we've got to, I got to feel comfortable. I think the board should feel comfortable seeing it all. And I know we've seen the 900,000.
Sure. We put that, we put that out. The next thing you'll see is we'll bring the bid specifications into you.
Yeah. I'd like for somebody to put it together so everybody feels good. Where are we on their extra, uh, their cash losses from the, uh, from the hail?
Oh, we, that's all been processed and they have all the information they need. We're just waiting for determination and check from them.
So we just have, but do we know where they are on the determining? Because that's the only thing that's open from the hail, right? Everything else has been kind of accounted for?
Right. And they asked us for additional information on this and so I provided that to them and we sent it to them about a month ago. And I followed up with them two weeks ago and they said they're finalizing it.
So, Chris, on the hail damage, how are we going to put that out to bid? We got nine, we got $900,000. Are we going to bid everything all out or are you, are you going to do each, each building separate like Mike said?
You said one... Well, it's going to be, it's going to be one bid, but it's going to be a contractor can bid on one building or you can bid on all of it.
That's my question.
Yeah. And so each individual, what you'll probably find is some of the big guys will come in and say they want to do the big work. But that also leaves it open for the little guys to come down and local students to do small work.
All right. So you got to put a bid out for that. How are we coming on putting a bid out for the meters?
I just had, had the bid specifications changed to allow metering as a service, and we'll have that in the next seven days and getting ready to put it out.
Okay, can we, can we get that posted too?
We would, we would have done that a couple.
I want these, I want these big ones to be posted so everybody can see them.
Fine, they're, they're be posted, and they also go on demand star.
I want them to be posted on the website so a guy like me who has no idea how to handle this thing can find it.
Sure.
Because if I can find it, I assume everybody else will. Right now, the last one that I can find is, is the irrigation project.
Yeah, that was the last one we issued.
I got a question, Chris. On the meters, if we go surface, do we have to put that out to bid? If that's a service contract?
Then that's, that's coming out with the RFP, you can respond like we did before. But what we did is we're adjusting the bid specifications, and I have meters just doing that to include metering as a service.
Right.
Those firms still respond.
So it's a service contract, not a, a, that bid contract?
Right.
Okay.
It'll all be in the same, it'll all be under the same.
I understand what you're saying. Some things are. On the wastewater plant, have we gotten anything back from them or we're still in limbo?
No, I haven't done anything, a couple of weeks, we're going to meet with them and.
You know, I look back, that RFP was, that was done in October of last year.
Yes, sir.
We made a company twenty-five thousand dollars, didn't we?
Well, we haven't paid them yet.
We haven't paid them yet? Don't you think it's time that we get the information?
Well, the information, what they sent back to us is they want some cost estimates on a few things, and we haven't provided that back to them yet.
We haven't given it back to them?
No.
Since October? There's no hurry on that. You guys want to talk about what you're thinking about doing as far as, uh, maybe some lineup changes or something? Ariel?
Uh, community services. Yeah, we, we talked about that, I'll do it, it was hard, and she, she got several, uh, resumes in. But when you looked at that position, it was like community services, if anyone wants someone that does communications, you know, or marketing, and also have that ability, technical ability to update the website and put that information out. Email blast, that type of thing, so you're almost looking at a pool manager, a court manager, community services, building manager, but also somebody that has a technical side. We haven't had real good luck getting somebody with that skill set. So we're looking at now, Ariel has some interviews scheduled with people that were strong on running recreation. And we're looking at just shifting that whole marketing to Fishlack, who's working with us on our website. So when we have, um, a new resident education, I mean, resident welcome package that we're working on now, we'll shift it right to them and not have that community services pool operator running it. If we have some type of marketing or updating on the website that involves the community, we'll let the marketing firm do it. And we also look at that as being more efficient, because to have someone that can run pools, run community centers and do that, but also has a marketing background and a technical background is a tough thing to find.
You guys okay with that?
But speaking of marketing and. What happened down in Fort Myers, should we be doing some kind of a, you know, come to look at southern lakes for, you know, a new place to try to rebuild and relit, you know, start over? Well, I know it's, it's pretty mature right now, I'm sure, but if we don't have something out there, and I don't know whether it's Southern Homes to do it or Prominence to do it, or that we could maybe put something out there that says, hey, you know, come look at us. It just might be an opportunity to something.
Well, that's a marketing firm about that, timing on it might be an issue.
Well, I, I understand, that's why I'm sensitive right now.
Are you guys okay with that change? Yeah, well, it's up, I think it's up to you guys.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I know, but.
I mean, I could be dissatisfied after you do it, but, you know, I think it's for you to do it. If that makes sense.
Mr. Eric, I share your thought process because I'm putting out an advertisement for, you know, our utility supervisor and a couple of local positions that we have. And I think that some of the situations down there, people I've talked to, that the wastewater plants that they worked at and water plants are wrecked.
Probably get a, probably get a good chef.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, uh, what direction for Cortez Schumacher? You all got Chris's, I believe it was included in the package?
And that was, that was when the board was talking about it, we did a resolution to the county and asked them to fund a hundred percent of the Schumacher road extension and paving. And the way that ended up is Scott put a hundred thousand dollars in the county budget to start a stockpile of money to be able to pay for it, hopefully to add a little more next year and the year after. And one thing we had done is the, the district previously bought the, the lots over on Orduna to allow that extension through and paving. And the last estimate that we got for it in, in twenty twenty-one to do that work, went from the estimate in twenty seventeen of fifty thousand, and now it's two hundred and fifty-three thousand, four hundred and sixteen dollars. And.
Are you going to be able to give us something on paper that if we go to these people, I know Mike already has?
That, that I haven't put together yet on how much we pay his taxes, how many new houses.
I just, just, we need, we need some, oh, keep it simple, we built so many houses, we think we're going to build so many houses. This is going to give you approximately this additional revenue for the county. All we're asking for is you cover the cost to Schumacher, we'll cover the cost of Cortez, and everyone will be happy. This is not a big deal.
I'll put together the cheat sheet for you.
We've given them.
They'll be allowed either, but.
I mean, they probably get about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars extra this year compared to two years ago. That wasn't in their pockets at least.
Plus all the lots, is it?
So I think it's a fair deal. It's a fifty-fifty split in my eyes, fifty percent they're paying for Schumacher and we're paying fifty percent for Cortez.
And, and do you want to convey that from the board correctly to them, that cheat sheet? Or is that something you want to use and go talk to them about it individually?
I think each, each of the supervisors, as what Scott was saying, each of the supervisors should have the same information and go talk to them separately, if they so choose to do so. But we all should be talking the same thing.
And they are.
Then we all need the same sheet.
Yeah, we all should have the same sheet, yes. Are we all in agreement with that?
Mm-hmm. Start.
So can you get that to us?
Yes, sir.
We only have one meeting, uh, in November, so it would be a good month to go visit these people, if we can get ahold of them. You guys okay with this?
Yes.
Yes.
I know Mike's very calm.
But he, he conveyed a different approach.
No, I just, I, I really didn't, they asked me, one of them asked me what I thought. The other, to tell you the truth, three of, three of the four that I talked to all had different opinions. So it's going to be maybe like us, you know, but I, I just told them the one that asked that, that I was in favor of us doing Cortez and then them doing Schumacher. And that's, that's what my thing was, but.
But you also told them you'd be willing to pay if everybody else paid.
Well, yeah, they're trying to do that, Scott's out now trying to get the other people to pay.
But that, but I, you convey that to one, just at least one of the members down there, right?
Yeah.
And that's the one that told me that it would, and I don't, and I don't want you, if you meet with them, you're going to find out what one of them tried to say.
It's the same one that votes against us every time.
No, no, it went out.
If the county, if the county, if there are people living on, on Schumacher, if the county wants to talk to them, gets money from, to get money from them, if they get the money, they keep it.
Right.
Yeah.
That's fine, let them have it. That eats, they don't have to pay the three hundred, maybe they pay two ninety or two eighty-five or whatever, but I want the fifty-fifty.
Yeah, boy.
I think the district should want the fifty-fifty. I keep saying. Just, that's what we should choose for, and until they tell us different, that's a package yourself.
Oh, but just, it just, they all, they all had different opinions. And Scott is going to be on our side, that, you know, whether he, you know.
We only got a convince to.
Yep.
Okay, uh, anything else for Chris?
I think you asked about a, uh, update also on the streetlights for Manor.
Oh, you got that?
Well, it's, um, we put in a work order on it, we created it, um, in the system with Duke on August thirty-first, and their target completion date is October nineteenth to have the pricing and layout.
So they have a price for us?
Yep.
October nineteenth, okay, good, good. Anything else? Uh, Kyle? Anybody?
Chef, where?
Chef, Chef Mac.
We put the Chef Mac, where's Mike? Is Mike up here? Give us an update on Chef Mac, please.
Yeah, good morning supervisors, uh, not a lot has changed in, in two weeks since we last spoke in the last meeting. Uh, but just an update on our game plan with that, so with his, um, with, with all the proposal that's been accepted, nothing about a contract at this time. So when he signs a contract, uh, to, to execute his plan, we'll, we'll put a timeline together as far as how that execution is going to go. Whether it's going to take four months, six months, fourteen, twenty-four, we'll build that, and then we'll build a succession plan for him into that proposal. So as he gets going, we're probably, you know, it's going to take, I'm just throwing stuff out there, just say it's going to take a year, and he thinks, you know, eight months into that plan, he's going to really need to direct his attention there and will need to exit as his position here. We'll build four or six months ahead of that into a succession plan. Or we're up, we will recruit, hire and possibly have some time to, to train into our system. But that's going to take a little bit of time, so obviously, yeah. Last discussion I have is Chef, it's, you know, it's in the lawyer's hands right now, so they're working out all that information. And once they execute that, then we'll build, build the timeline and the succession plan. Obviously, in the last two weeks, I haven't had a lot of discussion because, you know, with the hurricane and all that going on, there's, we weren't really together a whole lot. And the trial lawyers weren't either, so.
Any comments on Chef there?
Well, I'll just voice it again, that I, I think we ought to be looking for a replacement. You talked about him helping you make a team, kind of make a team. And, uh, while that might be very well done, but who's he going to take with him when he leaves? He makes a team that he likes to work with, that would be probably the first people that he would take with him to his own business. I think it's imperative that we go out and find us somebody that we feel is going to stay, because obviously he's not going to. So you're banking on someone whose first interest is not, the restaurant is Sunland Lake. His first interest is running a new business down on the circuit. I don't care what he said, I'm not saying he would do it maliciously. But as a, if I was starting a business, my thoughts would be on starting the business. And, yeah, I can do this because I, gives me money to maybe get there later. But my first thought is, what am I going to do, how am I going to do it, where's my financing, et cetera, et cetera. So I still think we're running all the risk, he's got no risk in this at all. And so we ought to be looking for a replacement.
No, and I share your concern, and that's, you know, at this time, he's, obviously he doesn't have a contract to, to execute it. Once, once that happens, what, what you're stating is, is actually, that's exactly what's going to go into, into that plan with the succession plan. I have had discussions with him at the very last meeting with your other concern about him taking employees with him. Obviously, I don't have that in writing at this time, but, um, that'll be something I'll discuss with, with Brian Rhodes, to see if there's something that we could maybe do to, to mitigate that. I don't know what that would be, but.
RSP, say.
Yeah, so that'll be a discussion I'll have with him. Um, obviously, that's a, that's a very large concern of mine as well, so, um, that's what we'll be working on.
Mike?
Yes.
The contract with the lawyers is supposed to be signed in two weeks, is that what you said?
No, 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 I, 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 I said I don't have a big up, a, a very big update in the, from the two weeks ago, where we discussed in our board meeting about the situation. After that meeting, I spoke with him, and he said that all, that situation is in the lawyer's hands right now. So there's no agreement being made, so nothing's moving forward until that's done. Once there's an agreement, then we'll build this, we'll build out a timeline in a succession plan. So however long that take, it could take three years for this whole process to go through. It could take six months, I really don't know. Until they have that agreement and figure it out, because I, I'm speaking out of my own brain, but that building is going to have to be renovated and all that other stuff. So until I know what the scope is and build a timeline, I just haven't had any time to do it. I mean, we, since two weeks from that meeting now, we had a hurricane, and we, we, we haven't even been open. So I have not had the time to, to sit down with him and start that yet. It will take a little bit of time to do so.
I think that the board's concern is that we will be, that once the lawyers get all his paperwork's in, then he will be ready to go. And we don't want to be stuck without a chef again.
I, I share the same concern, and then we, we will definitely, as soon as we have a little bit more information, I just need a little bit more time to sit down and walk through that, call that out. I do have a commitment from him to be here through at least May of this year. This process is going to take a very long time.
I, I just.
And I just, I.
That's not good.
Since, since the last, like I said, we, we've done a whole lot, I haven't had the opportunity to sit down and start building this, this timeline, but.
I understand, but I think at the next board meeting, you better come to us with something solid with the time, because we cannot, we have to be conscious of our, our members and our residents. We cannot close the chef down and the restaurant down and not have a chef.
One hundred percent understand, and that's what I'm telling you today, that I'm going to bring you that as soon as I can get it established.
Thank you.
But it's, like, just a, for you, with, with Craig saying, I think you, you've got to make the decisions, I guess, but I'm, I'm very uncomfortable too, like, Mr. Eric, uh, we need, you need to be in the driver's seat behind him. It sounds to me like you're waiting to see what he's doing. I mean, we need, you should be looking right now.
Yeah, absolutely.
Absolutely, right now, and don't sign a contract, because he's already telling us what he's going to do. I mean, I, I just, but again, it's your business to run, and we have allowed it, but I don't like the direction this is going, you know, just to tell you the truth. But that's, that's, I just had to make that comment, that's, it's up to you.
Michael? I mean, other Michael? Uh, we, we have a meeting on our committee on Thursday, I don't know, on Wednesday, I think, uh, with Brian. We got Brian to come down for our meeting.
So Chris? What? You're talking about the chef?
Yeah.
Okay.
And we'll get to discuss all that. All the feedback I got from everybody on the board has basically said the same thing everybody said. We can't get caught without a chef, you know? Um, and I think, think even if he gives, gives Michael a date of, of, what'd you say, May, Mike?
That's what he's committed to.
Okay, if he gives him a, I think, I think that, that, uh, we should bring the chef in long before that, even if he's leaving, because then they work together going out the door, and then it should be, there should be no interruption of, of the restaurant. But everybody on the committee has all said the same thing as, as, as we're saying right here. We've got to make sure we're covered, because we're all, I mean, and especially a few people here next to us on the line, because we want, you know, we're in the back queue to heat you here. And I just want to make sure that you understand that, Michael. I mean, I've had no complaints from, from, uh, from any residents in the last couple of weeks about restaurants. Obviously, I haven't opened much, but.
I agree with that.
You know, um, you know, but, I mean, things are getting, things are getting better, the service and everything. So we have another meeting on, on Wednesday, and Brian's coming. He's also supposed to bring a new, uh, Michael, uh, uh.
Yeah, there, there's going to be a new regional F and B, he's going to be a little more local. His name's Bill Weller, he's, he's a GM as, as a minor role at a different clubs. But he has a more of an F and B background, and so he, he stepped into that regional role with the Indigo team.
Right, and he's only a couple hours away from here.
Right.
And I'm insured that if we need him, we can call him too, so, so we are moving on.
Michael, so when is, when is your committee done?
When is your committee over with? That you're doing?
We never talked about it, right?
Oh, I did one way, I thought it was you, but...
Well, no, but, I mean, you know, he's...
I mean, you guys, you, you, I think this committee can improve it.
And we are improving.
Three months of us, so.
And we are improving it, okay?
Wednesday, Wednesday.
Oh, okay, I think we should keep it going, you know?
Okay.
It's just a good coffee, I mean, we don't have to meet every...
Okay, that's reasonable.
You know?
Let's, let's, let's try this, Chef Mac, if I, from what I'm hearing, the consensus of the board is, don't wait. I heard, I heard four people say that, not even myself, said, "Don't wait." So, I gotta go with the board on this one, I say, "Don't wait," and I think you start looking now, and if you've got problems with it, you talk to Brian, and have Brian talk to me. But the direction of the board right now is to start looking for it right now. That's board.
I think I'll update you guys on that with, um, I'll, I'll have a conversation with Brian, and I'll update you guys if...
You know, I, I will give you this, I'm not looking to screw the guy, even though he may be screwing us, but I don't have a problem with having two chefs if we have to for a little while to make sure that Sun and Lake comes out ahead of us here. And, so it's not a money issue, as far as I'm concerned, it's saving our funds and having the restaurant running correctly.
I understand that, and I also don't want him to leave tomorrow either, so, uh, that would be a bigger problem, but I...
I'm sorry, Mike.
I said, I also don't want him to leave tomorrow, 'cause we're running a job, but, uh, that, so, I...
I think we get somebody here, it's, it's possible, and I would go that, I hate to say this, because he's running up. There's a lot of chefs down in a certain part of Florida that probably don't have a job. That probably won't buy people looking for them.
Definitely looking for that, for sure.
And...
I hate to say that, but...
I know you're under a lot, you've got a lot of people telling you what to do, but I, I think this, this board right here is, you know, sometimes we get just by the luck that you've got too many bosses, but, uh, I think you understand what we're trying to say.
As we stated in the last meeting, we will put together a timeline, and we will give a team as soon as that's possible.
So, like I said, if you can't, if you can't, if you don't agree or get with what the board is deciding, then have Brian contact us, otherwise I assume it's gonna happen, I'll do so. Okay, uh, Michael, you don't have the report for the restaurant?
I just, I don't like, I, I just wanted to, you know, what our company has to do.
You have something to say?
No.
No, so we'll, we'll close on that. The restaurant review that you brought is right here.
Yes.
Restaurant, where's, he was, he was...
No, I know, I have the report, I have the report.
All right, the restaurant report that your company issued, I, I went through it, and I gotta tell you, I thought there was some wonderful suggestions, but this was done in August, and I was just wondering if you guys could bring the board up to date on what's been done.
Sure, so, obviously, this, this, this kinda just came up here when I showed up in the tent, and so I, I, I haven't gone line by line to, to give you something that, in writing that I could give you. If you like, we could, I don't think you want to, but we could go line item by line item here, and I could tell you that, or I can have...
I would, I would like to know, is anything here been improved or whatever?
Sure, absolutely, and, and, so a lot of these things were, were some things that we already, already did, and, and part of our discussion with, with David and Monica, we spent several hours with them, I, I did personally, um, they gave us some, some new ideas how, amongst those topics, even though we might have been doing those, um, to do it different, uh, and maybe be more effective.
How about, let's do this, I don't, probably you didn't have enough time to really get prepared for this.
No, no, I did not, I, I spent a...
All right, so let's, let's put this off in the next meeting, but I want somebody to explain to us whether you've done any, each of these points, I mean, if we're all upset with the restaurant, and your company takes the time to do a, a report with all these suggestions, surely, we should have an update on what those are, otherwise, how do we expect the restaurant to improve?
No, absolutely, and, and I have with my team, I have followed up with these more than one time. To make this easier, what I'd like to do, so we don't have to spend forty-five minutes in a board meeting, will let me, I will go through this, and I will give you an update on the bullet points and issue to you before the board meeting. You can read them, and then if you have questions, we can question and answer at the board meeting at the same time.
Sounds good.
Yeah, I mean, so you're gonna update, I mean, like, for example, this is what, consider adopting a pager solution to non-verbally communicate with servers when the food is ready, to help speed, uh, to help speed up food delivery, keep serving, just move it.
I think that's a wonderful, we, we did have that discussion, and, uh, you know, again, I, even on those items, I'll follow up with you.
Yeah, so I'd like to go, and we'll, you know, have you updated us on all these points, whether we're really gonna be serious about this, or...
There's, well, there's plenty, I think, that we've done, and, and may, and there's, there's some of them that we haven't, and there's maybe a reason for that, but I'll...
So I'll do that next meeting, okay?
Absolutely.
Quick question. David and Monica, are they Truun employees or are they...?
So, so they are Truun employees, so they actually, they're out in Scottsdale, Arizona, so they, they, they...
That's all I didn't know, no.
I mean, I think it's great for them.
Yeah, it was too, very detailed.
Okay, so, uh, listen, next meeting...
What I don't appreciate is why it took a damn year. Excuse me, apologize for that. Why it took a year for us to have something like this done, and Truun's been here for a long time.
Yeah, uh, uh, that would be a discussion to have with their team, for sure, but, uh, obviously, yes.
Okay, uh, Golf Course.
Do you have anything else, Michael, so? I might, I might report, I don't know if there's any bullets you really want me to hit there, I, that's kind of the usual, um, the membership obviously made a big jump from last time, uh, it's up to fifty-four percent, um, everything else is just, I think, pretty standard, you know, bullet, but... Yeah, we have the Winter Ball Classic next week, and Carrying Hearts of Fun after that. Quick, so, so Chris and the district, they purchased a team, uh, for the, um, the Advent Health Celebrity Entertainment, um, and he is donating to the club, so we're gonna do a raft for the membership, so three members will get to plan that event with a celebrity. Uh, that, hopefully, see that information come out real soon, the email will have posted. Uh, we'll have about a three-week signup period, and then we'll draw those, and then we'll get to plan the event, on behalf of the district, so.
One quick, one hundred quick, I have. What would be your cost to add a side salad to your entrees without it being a two-dollar upcharge? Don't need to answer it now, answer it later, 'cause everybody else offers salads normally with any of the meals. As far as we do not here, we have to have a side, an upcharge of two bucks. What's it gonna cost, just put it on, that's, get back to us.
I know it's two bucks, because I was there Wednesday night, and I, I, I always complained. Meal was excellent, the country fried steak, national table was great, it was very, very good. Service was excellent, J C was a new employee, I believe, and he did a great job, and, uh, this was a, I think there was, uh, approximately thirty people, which I, I don't agree with having people, that many people come at one time. I think that you're asking for problems, but our table, a eight, got handled very, very efficiently, and, so, congratulations.
See, I told him that, put your picture up in, in the kitchen. I knew that was... I did hear, tell me if this is true, my wife was at the restaurant, and she thought that there was a lot of new faces there, and that people have relocated, I swear to God, so she told me. She thinks people are coming up and down south, 'cause they gotta, they gotta live someplace. You heard anything that, was the restaurant crowded?
Uh, it was very busy Wednesday night, it was not very busy last night, um...
See, this was Wednesday, she was talking.
Right, Wednesday, Wednesday night was very busy. Uh, it was, it was, uh, the last night was normal. Um, I have not come into contact with anybody that said they came up from down there and were not there.
I just wanna...
I, I have no personal, I have not...
That could happen, but, all right, Kyle?
All right, well, we'll wind you down. So seventeen is the, was the last hole to be pulled in, it is pulled in. Um, we're, we flushed all the way to hole fifteen, uh, so this weekend, we should be good on all the flushing. All those satellites are all put in, wires all the way up to hole fifteen, as far as, uh, the satellites, uh, still being wired in. Monday is our game plan, you see, if you came by the, uh, club this morning, they're working on the compensation today, getting the flanges ready, everything. We still have our water from Turtle right now, and Monday, I'll have to shut the back nine off in order to put the flanges on and everything, so there's no way to keep water on, uh, ten to eighteen will come Monday, so it will be without water for two days. After that, it's just gonna be a little detail stuff, um, as far as getting cleaned up. Intention is to, like I said, the, there's gonna be a lot of sawdust work, as you noticed, driving around. Um, most of it's on the holes that were wet, you know, to prevent from working, and I tried to protect the grass as much as we could there. It was, uh, it was a chore, it's, at least through hole twelve, so looking at options, possibly, um, seeing it, milling it, and trying to get out sawdust for the last two, three weeks, but I just haven't been able to get it because the sawdust has been so bad. So, as soon as I can get some sawdust, we'll get it. As Mike said, we have weather next weekend, so as soon as they get done, I think, give them next week, and we should be able to go pull up again. And that being said, we still will have them sooner or later. Try to keep the membership, rest of what we're doing there.
How much longer on here?
They're, they're gonna be done this afternoon with everything except the flushing on this. And then we... No, I mean, the sawdust is still gonna be on the project, but seventeen's all pulled in, so right now, they're putting seven heads this morning, um, we flushed through fifteen, so when they drill that plastic, that HDB, and gets in the pipe, so they gotta take every head, and they gotta flush all that plastic back out of it, and so, and unfortunately, on the wet holes, the reason they're behind is because the wet holes, sand got in the lines, and they had to flush all the sand out, it was a nightmare. So, uh, I mean, they did pretty good, I mean, Carl Potter's crewman, I know he's a weight slaver, he's what he wanted, but, you know, he, uh, he was less than this week as well, he gave us four guys and two reactors and trailers every day. It was clean up the storm, and that's the reason I'll be able to get the storm, uh, to break through that. And, uh, if you drove by the tennis courts at the clubhouse, please stop hollering all over there, that's the payment, get to it easier. I don't know if that's like the best right now, but I just felt that was the best way to put it, 'cause we had such large amount of rain.
Do you have any comment about the drainage issues on hole fifteen on here?
I haven't, um, I know what they're talking about, I mean, that's where, it's really behind fourteen green. Um, so, the other day, what happened on sixteen, is the wears, they get clogged up all the time. Bob's admin every morning, when we're having rains, to send his crew out to make sure the wears are cleaned off. Um, but that, there was debris stuff on, Chovy actually made a telescope pole to get the debris off of them. I mean, that morning, uh, that, all that was happening, Chris and I were in contact with each other, and we were trying to figure out what all was going on, and it was dark, it was running down behind their house, but, I mean, there's so much debris that comes out of the woods, everything else, so all that comes down, and all the way to fifteen tee. And then if you remember, behind fourteen green, there's a bunch of vegetation that's in there, what that fellow was talking about earlier, and we, we probably do need to dredge all that, and fix all that, it's just been years, there's, there's got, uh, you know, the, I'm not saying it's been, that, it just gets grown, and it gets growing up, it gets those Brazilian pepper trees in it and stuff, and it's gotta be cleared out. So, I mean, and, as far as...
Can we help fix it?
Huh?
I said, "How are we gonna fix the problem?"
Well, I, I tell you how I would fix it, and then that's really the...
That's true, right?
I know it's true, but I was, and he kept saying Golf Course, Golf Course, I wanted to, and then the records that it's not all from Golf Course.
The Golf, the Golf Course takes a lot of drainage from both ways, too.
That's exactly right. I'm just trying to clear the record that it's not all because the Golf Course is in there, other issues.
I mean, and unfortunately, my holes three through six over there, there's really nowhere for that water to go, and those retention ponds, yeah, but they're supposed to, just, you know, unfortunately, uh, it was just more, the ground is already saturated, we can't keep that.
What's the date for opening here?
I, uh, fifteenth is when we're, when Mike and I discussed yesterday. Just, like I said, just keep in mind, Mr. Eric, that we will have, uh, we'll have some cleanup, we'll have some sawdust work and stuff.
It'll be playable, but it's gonna have some places...
Yes, and we're still gonna continue on, I'm still gonna continue on Turtle through this fall as well, patch it as much as we can. Um, one thing that we had to do this morning, though, was, uh, close the entrance to the, uh, front side path in my number five, because that hole is washed out, and the path is breaking away on Turtle. There's a big hole, and I don't know whether you ever noticed, but I go into the ladies' side, there's always been a big, uh, hole there. But the water washed so much of the dirt away from the pipe, that it washed all of the stuff out, and the guard panels collapsed, so we're gonna, we're gonna have to fix that one day.
Did you guys, I mean, I know into where, do you look at that cement on the, the bridge? When the concrete's loading, the bridge, no?
Yeah, everything's, I mean, the water's in itself, but how much of dirt and everything, probably we can grind that. We can take the saw and try to do it, but there's a lot of stuff that got heaved up, the trees and everything.
Did you plug that C box? Did you convert it, we're not playing one and nine, it's part of five, so?
Number one's a part three, number nine is me to play this part one. I wrote, I wrote it all off yesterday, and it's actually...
You wrote it all off correctly, there's no problem.
No, there's, there's, there's actually a bunch of them, I, I do, and it's probably even a lot more dry today than what I was... It, it should, it should, it should not be an issue, you can play this as a part five, the biggest issue is that we are...
I mean, I'm sure they'll tell you about it, it's a question. Okay, anything, yes, you got anything else, if I can finish, you got anything else to me?
Uh, no, sir.
You wanna say something?
We're just around to ask this question, but he's got a record. But according to the building materials, there's a thousand and eighty-nine sprinkler heads on the zoo here. First thing the guys did when they, when they, by the way, I watched them activate sixteen the other day, and it's pretty efficient, the way they do it. Pull all the stuff up, and then they activate the sprinklers, but, activate the sprinkler heads, there's a thousand and eighty, the first thing they did was remove the old sprinkler heads on the course. I can't believe how much that costs, the sprinkler heads. There's a thousand and eighty-nine sprinkler heads, it's almost two-hundred-and-forty-five thousand dollars in material in sprinkler heads. So, is there any salvage value, who gets the old sprinkler heads?
So, what we're gonna do is with the old sprinkler heads, we're gonna actually try, with Mike, you guys can... We're, we're gonna actually try to resell some of the, uh, old sprinkler heads and the, uh, old satellites, I have all the satellites. We're gonna keep about fifty for Turtle, because over time, they get dryer on it, and they, they stop functioning, but we're gonna take them to fastening on all the overings, and try to save them all in the front house, but most of them, we're gonna try to recoup a little bit of money from them. And, and keep, keep in mind, too, that anything that's left over on the job, Wes will look back and write back towards the project.
Okay, anything else with Kyle, people? Rainage? Rainage and roads.
Good morning, Bob Rumpf, supervisor of roads and drainage, Drew Jones, the Pulsing Engineers, here to give you an update on the, uh, on the progress budget on projects for roads and drains.
Which one first?
The roads first. Um, the roads will do, every year, we have the same amount of money, but we're able to do fewer amounts of, of road, because of the cost, everything pass off. Then, uh, contractors are pricing it going up, nothing, nothing. We're estimating you can do a... We're estimating we can do a mile for a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for this upcoming year. That may not be valid anymore, but we'll, we'll, that's what we're basing our part of, the road amounts that we're gonna do. We're looking at the intersections in the San Lorenzo and San Ignacio and Gordo Beach, doing redoing those intersections because those are really in worse condition. Most of you at sixteen.
The thing with, the thing with the roads that I want the board to pay attention to is we're not gonna agree to this today. But if you have any interest in driving the neighborhoods to verify that you're in agreement with this, please do so, and then we'll agree to it at the next meeting. If you have any suggestions on something that you see within the district that you think needs attention ahead of these, bring that information to the next meeting and we'll find out if it's everything. But this is your starting point. They've given you-
These are the ones we think need the most attention right now.
Right. But I just want the board, if they, if they're interested to have to practice seeing if they're in agreement, and if they're in agreement, fine. And we'll go and say, next meeting, you're good.
Sounds good.
Is that okay? Rainage, it's gonna be, it's gonna be, drainage is a little bit more complicated than-
Yeah, um, I know, I know we've had some initial, I don't know if it's circulated to the board or not, but we always kinda keep a running list of items we wanna try to address. Essentially, on the second page is the majority of those items. And we kinda have a rough estimate of, we're trying to keep track of how much money we're gonna need to spend on them. Some of this money might not be enough, but the, the dark line is approximately our cutoff on what we have to budget for this year. I do understand that we might, I don't know if it's been decided yet, but I know we've had some emergency work we've done on Alba, in regards to drainage and a couple other places. I don't know where that money is getting-
Any, I can tell you, I've already talked to Chris about this. Any previous expenditures will not affect this year's coming budget. We'll take it out of reserves if necessary. But the worst thing we can do would be to take out of this and start creating a crop. If we have to cut to two hundred thousand, which they've done in the last couple of weeks, we'll take it out of the service.
Okay, okay.
I was just, you know, and-
Um, I was just keeping that in mind when I was discussing, because I didn't wanna, if we've lost seventy-five thousand for the job, we'll adjust for it.
You got it, what's the budget, three hundred thousand? Three fifty? Whatever the budget is, is what.
Okay.
We can address.
Okay. Some of the more recent bits from hurricane and recent flooding have caused us to adjust this over the last month. Cause we've had, I don't know if you've been behind the dialysis center on Salt Lake Boulevard.
Behind what?
The dialysis center. It's right across from the firehouse, the new firehouse they built. Um, I don't know if you've been around when it was raining bad, but there in the parking lot had massive water coming through it. Well, it's one of, I, I don't wanna say our drainage culverts, but it's become the district's culvert because it's in our easement. Um, it's either thirty or thirty-six inch equivalent around elliptical pipe. It dumps out right at the property corner. It comes right across the parking lot into Salt Lake Boulevard.
That's not on you.
That is, that's the only one.
Where is that?
Number one on the list.
Okay.
Um, the rest of the residents, I guess that building did not have a culvert installed, but every other one does. I'm assuming it was older and other developments. Um, historically, I think there was supposed to be a ditch there, um, but it's, it's full of trees and everything, they're back, they're back to the property in easement. And then there's a fifteen foot buffer that's also back there that usually ends up getting utilized for drainage and utilities. So, our, our proposal for correction would be connect the pipe stops there and after the three lots, it continues on. There's an inlet, the pipe goes on all the way to front road. So, our proposal would be to connect those two pipes. It probably gonna take two inlets, or estimated two inlets and then a hundred sixty feet of pipe to take care of the problem. Cause we can't, if we just cut the ditch in, there's no good way to dump it back into the continuation of pipe. And we don't wanna send any, any water to the back of the unit two residence. Cause we, Bob and I walked it this past week and there's a, a large sawaw and dip between the commercial developments and then the residential lots. So, we don't wanna flood out their backyards if we try to just ditch it out. So, the proper solution would be to pipe it. The next area which we had, which we looked at, and we've had a bunch of complaints here recently after the hurricanes and flooding in Calatara, is number two. But after the recent discussions with the residents, the money that I put down for the cost estimate, I don't think it's gonna be enough. It might be to allocate it for funds.
How much? Just, just, just a minute.
I would, I would say the double of fifty. I would say try to put about at least a hundred.
You're talking about fixing all those Calatara problems?
I can't say all of them, but the main, the main start would be the ditch on the golf course with everyone's approval, of course. Right now, we're looking at minimum making the ditch a lot bigger. I don't wanna say create a pond, but give it more volume. So, when everything's rushing off of the golf course, it actually has somewhere to go. But I can, I can help, because everything kinda has been changing this past week, given all the information.
You and I have to take a right, it's gonna be a little bit-
Is there any place around there to make a retention pond?
Um, we were looking, I don't, I'm sure you're all familiar with it, but the golf course actually has a chunk back there, just, there's like a wetland area between the wetland and, yeah, in Kansas. There's a bunch of golf course property, we potentially could utilize that for retention. There's actually an old master plan for the southwest basin that never was constructed and never fell under permit. That whole area of golf course was gonna be a giant pond, but they never, they never have constructed it. So, we would potentially put something there.
Well, we need more because what we got is those ponds that are there fill up and that's what floods them.
Right. And the biggest thing is we don't wanna, if we can help putting giant pipes in everywhere because that's gonna be a huge cost, if we can create a pond and provide continuation, so it gives somewhere for like flash flooding, whatever to go, and then our pipe, the existing pipes that are draining can still take it over time versus all of it coming within the twenty-four hour period.
We gotta solve their problem.
Yeah, we have to solve their problem.
I mean, I think that came very obviously there.
Correct, that's, that's-
You know, it is, it's gonna be what it is, but I don't wanna change it, so we have to deal with it two years from now.
Right. We'll, we'll, we'll definitely do modeling and figure out everything that's coming to that area to give us legitimate numbers and not just do the simple cleaning job.
Can we move that up to number one?
Yes, we can definitely move that up to number one.
Did you, excuse me, one second. Did you figure out a number that we have? Don't you and I talk about that?
Or as accounts. Yeah, as of this morning, TD Bank had four point eight.
How much?
Four point eight. No, no, this is just TD Bank.
Oh, yeah.
And then the twenty-fourth prime, Florida bid, I believe, five point two. So, around that six million.
Six million. I, what I asked, I'm trying to find out how much we have in reserve.
That's all accounts.
Because, you know, I know we'll have another hurricane hopefully like this one, but I don't wanna take a chance that we, that I could be wrong.
Right. And Ray, that's, that's all accounts for TD Bank.
Four hundred thousand?
Four point eight.
That's all TD Bank, then there's another one point two somewhere else.
We've got, we've got all, we have six or seven million, it's in the re- All right, I'll come over and-
Yeah.
But we have to get a good number because quite frankly, I would be willing, I don't know about the rest of the board, to entertain doing more for soon at this, at this point in time based on what's been going on. But we need, I need to know what we have in reserves so we can make an intelligent decision.
And that, that she will hand out, but the utility fund has three million in it, the U R R I F has seven hundred and fifteen thousand left in it, so you can call it capital all you want, but that's all money that came from the utility customer that has three point seven million.
That's not spendable, I don't think, is it? I mean, that stuff we should keep, that's not perfect. So, we just need to figure out how much we actually have, because it should be somewhere, in my opinion, around seven million. I don't know where to start up. But you guys, I think the last report that came out to the district, it was somewhere around eleven, or ten, that we still had obligations to. So, it's six or seven for sure. And we sent, the board had discussed once upon a time that we'd keep, try to go no lower than six. So, if we've got five to six hundred thousand above six, we didn't wanna entertain doing some good with it, but that's what I'm trying to get at. Okay, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I got a question. How long is it gonna take you to get the plan back to us? To see what we're gonna do? Because we gotta address this. For years, I've been sitting here, listening, listening, and listening, and we keep throwing away, okay? We'll do it next year, we'll do it next year. We've got, we're now, I'm happy we have a board that wants to commit, okay? But how long do you think you'll come back with a plan for that area?
I would probably just be on the same side, probably a couple months, just to make sure.
I don't, I wanna go out and try with them next week to see what we're actually talking about.
Yeah. I wanna go with them, but not with you while I'm on the way out. You can't go with them.
Well, we'll take two years. I'll, I'll-
No.
The biggest thing we gotta understand is if we go and we construct a retention pond and we're not just cleaning and maintaining, we're gonna have to get a Swiftland permit. And this is part, this area is part of an old exemption. It's under the blanket permit to the district, but it was under the exemption from the old Corps permit, which before Swiftland existed, Army Corps engineers was permitting-
District property, right?
Yes, but it's an impoundment, we have to get it-
If it's district property, you still gotta get a permit. So, we'll take a look at it, we'll come up with a number, and this time we're gonna execute.
Right.
That's all.
Can we clean the, the drainage pipe again, is it a little sun related?
Right. That's the thing I was gonna follow up. If we can come up with multiple portions of it, like say we, say we do the, the cleaning of the ditch first, or have that as the primary, and have the pond as a secondary, like after we get a permit, fill it, even if, I'm not saying don't, I'm saying put it off to next year for the pond, but if for some reason we have to, or we have money, we can have the pond be constructed immediately after, or whatever, wait till it's permitted and build it.
You think we do the ditch first?
What can't, why can't we start doing something about cleaning the ditch ASAP?
No, we can't.
Not two weeks from now.
Right. The only thing we gotta just make sure everyone's on the same page before we do it, but we can, assuming we can get either our contractor that we already have, assuming the whole continuing contract stuff is still good, we can get him out there as soon as he wraps up everything else he's doing in the district and start the-
Let's take first, let your number ride, grab some value, Chris, and come up with a plan, present it to the board, and come up with a cost.
So, two months, you'll have a plan for it?
Soon everything green left and nothing else.
That's why, yeah, okay, so two months, I'll see you.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, you're saying there's no need really for those residents?
That's, that's why we would go and start the cleaning, get everything, everything we can, very clean, so that's, I'm hoping that'll be a few days.
But the other problem, if you go and clean now, it's so wet, we can't actually clean, you know? I mean, cause it's so wet back there, you can't get equipment, so it's gonna be tougher to start cleaning right away, just so everybody understands that.
Exactly right, I just wanna go see.
You have a backyard anytime.
What's identifies the problem?
The other day. All right, you're sorry, you're-
All right. Can I ask you a question? Yes. Yes.
I was, I've had people visit, okay, my bed doesn't need-
Uh, uh, go on there. If you're gonna ask, you gotta do it right.
Okay, first of all, let me explain that where I live, Manor Drive drains come down to Monza. There's also swales behind all the hoses on Monza, swales in front of the hoses on Monza, and all that water comes down within three lots of being both ways, kinda like a retention pond. Now, there's a total of seven drains without the swale. They come down behind my neighbor, two of them, they come two from up there, three from upon Manor, two behind my neighbor, goes over, and I don't know why they do this, but they make them with, you know, all kinds of right angles. But anyways, it comes down to a drain across my house by the mail, it goes into my drain. And my drain is completely blocked. So, all the water that's coming down is trying to go through a drain that isn't there. I still got water sitting there and it's starting to smell. I don't know what's in it, I don't know what the problem with it is, but I was given the information that someone would do something about it. You've got a, you've got a drain that's fifty feet long that's full of sand. I've got a pile of-
How much are addressed?
Twenty-eight oh eight Monza. I've got a pile of sand that looks, everybody thought was a dead animal, animal, because it's about this long, this wide, and this high. Blue on the drain, and it's not the first time this has- All I meant, here's, I have a thought, I'd like to have it considered. The big house on the corner, we all know, has its gutters and everything going into a pipe across his property. So, basically, his three thousand square foot roof has his gutters going in there. So, the poor neighbor next door never has an empty driveway when it rains. He's got three kids, not right, it's just not right. Now, I know Mike, Mike worked with us, someone helped, but here's the in-line. They could put a drain on the swale on the side of the property of that house, right where the swale is, and prevent all that water that's coming down that swale to my neighbor, bring it out to the pipes this guy's already got, the drains this guy's already got, and go across the street, and they're both empty lots. They're not gonna have to mess with anybody's house. They go right across, and go into Sunrise and hook up to the pipe there. So, instead of everything trying to go through my pipe, they could split it up and some half will go through that pipe, and maybe we wouldn't have a problem.
You know, the salt goes up in my head. I, we'll look at it, we'll try to tell you.
Basically, what, what I'm saying is, you've got a shitload of water going down, trying to go down from both sides and the middle, and a drain that can't handle it.
We'll look at it.
Drew's been out there already and Drew knows the area. Drew, all right, you know what he's talking about. All right, so you guys-
I thought I was gonna hear something, but I never heard anything about this.
Wait, so, let's, oh, Dennis, thank you.
Bob and I, there is a clog pipe that I'm assuming runs right next to your house.
Yep.
We have, the utility department has a jet. The intent for the P D kit correction is to get, get their jet system and try to jet out the pipe first. If that does not work, we're going to have to hire somebody to come and clean all the pipes out in that area. So, that's-
I understand, as Chris said a couple of hours ago, we have a sewer problem. We have a drainage problem in Salt Lake that hasn't been attended to for many years. So, that's fact.
Is there any land to put in a second-
So, we cannot, excuse me. We cannot address it to every individual need as they come. We have to have a plan on how we're gonna do this.
That's what I'm, all I'm asking is if they are gonna consider trying to put a pipe, another pipeline in so that we can cut the drain, you know?
I'm not gonna put another pipeline into somebody, another lot.
It's empty lot.
But somebody ought to.
They have, but they have, you guys got a right to take a look.
That's just, that's just asking for the double, I do, somebody's-
You've got, you've got a right to do it.
We'll, we'll, we'll take a look at it and we'll see. That's all I can do.
I'd like to hear about it.
I would like to see it, I will see it.
Make sure if you come over, you knock on my door and I'll show you every little bit of it, you're gonna see what it's-
I'm sure that Drew can show it to me.
I was facing twenty-eight feet of water in my front yard, leaking in my garage, I had a four foot, uh, eight, nine foot river on my left side, and the, behind the house, I had a twelve foot river.
I understand that. We will take a look at it, and this is all I can tell you today. I can't solve your problem.
But I've been, I've been, I've been asking about this for weeks. We still got all this water sitting in the lawn because it can't drain. And if we get rained, it's gonna get worse.
I understand your situation, Dennis, I can't take care of it today.
I understand that. But somebody could have been out by now and talked to me and given me some kind of suggestions what they're gonna do with it. I never heard anything.
I talked to you-
I know, I talked to Bob and he said that he was gonna talk to the engineer, but I never heard anything after that.
Okay, thank you, Dennis.
Okay, um, we, okay, we finished with Calatara. Um, that's gonna be, apparently priority number one. Um, we, we have on its number three, the Zerona Avenue. There's a new house going in, right next to a, one of the larger, advanced ditches. Um, this is another one, I'm not sure we're, I assumed it would be coming out of our drainage budget since it's a drainage improvement. The main purpose of this is whenever the houses get built, anything past Cortez is on septic. So the houses are usually end up four or five feet in the air compared to what they would normally, not necessarily that high, but usually a few more feet higher than our normal minimum. Uh, so if you have a main and drainage ditch right next to a house that high, there's almost always a real problem with it. So we were trying to get ahead of it, because we did another one on, what's the, Manchula, which is the next road to the west. Um, it only required a single color, but this is more preventative maintenance, to get it in before they build the house.
So?
This is the forty-two.
None of this has anything to do with the five million, the six million dollars in the corner?
Not, not that specific house.
Huh?
No, we, we do not have, and the six million dollars, we do not have, there's a few areas next to existing houses we're considering putting a pipe, but we weren't gonna pipe every main drainage ditch, because that would be astronomical to.
So we have a six million dollar problem, plus this, plus who knows what else?
Well, yes, there's, you probably don't wanna think about how much money they could spend making everything perfect out here, but.
I probably just wanna shoot the people that used to run this place.
Yes.
What does that have to do with it?
I didn't say anything about it.
Well, obviously, it's been ignored for years.
For twenty-five years.
Well, you know. That didn't, that didn't get anything resolved.
Nobody said anything.
But it's the point, listen, at least we're finally taking stuff to fix.
I agree.
So why don't we stay positive instead of.
I am.
Yeah, you are.
Now, what else, what else, I mean.
But this, this, this is, this is that forty-two fifty-six, right?
Yes.
Talking about that?
Yes.
Is that our fault?
And that's our issue to deal with.
It's, the reason it's our ditch issue to deal with is, do we wanna wait? Do we wanna let it build and then come in five years later when the ditch is eroded? Or if they have an erosion problem? Um, because it.
Is it our fault?
It's our ditch.
It will be, yes.
It's our ditch.
So just maybe it's simply yes or no. Is it our fault?
It's our, it's, it's our responsibility. It's our responsibility. Fault is not really a, it's not really the correct word here.
So it's our fault, we gotta fix it.
Yes.
That's, that's all I ask, that's all I ask.
It's, it's our ditch, it's gonna be our problem if it becomes, I say to say if, because it will become a problem eventually, because you have, I, do we have, somebody, I hate to bring you into this. Do you know, do you remember if we have a permit to the south of this ditch yet?
I have a permit for that particular lot. I want to add this, but I don't have anything.
I can't hear you.
Okay, so I do have a permit for five lots on Zerona. And that particular one has been pulled, and they're waiting for us to make a decision on this covert before they can do anything else to the property.
That's our fault.
Right, I just, we're gonna end up, because I think they're building, they're pumping, you said they cleared both sides of it?
It cleared, yes.
Okay, so the petition's gonna have two homes on each side of the ditch, so that's, that's why I wanted to get ahead of it and take care of it before it became a problem, essentially. It's far easier to do it now.
Is this the beginning of something that's gonna be occurring left and right?
Okay, potentially on some lots, because we do have, if the blocks, the main blocks are north and south, our main ditches run east and west and through them. So we don't have utilities, and they have to be on septic, so you end up with a scenario where the house built way up versus the ditch is three to five feet below the finished floor of the house.
So the other four lots that they have will have to do the same thing?
Well, there's no ditch on those particular lots. This just happens to be a double covert on where across the line, it's a massive ditch.
So if we go with the first seven items, since we gave you fifty thousand, what, number two, we're probably about three twenty-six, right? Right? Now, those other thirteen items, fourteen, or whatever, fourteen items that you have there, how bad are they?
Um, some of them are preventative maintenance, some of them are the same scenario we're dealing with with the house near our main ditch, um, which we don't have, there's no like major erosion yet, but it's something that you can see that's been happening.
How serious a problem are they?
We're, we're, they're not, they're not serious enough that we need to make sure we do them immediately, that makes, they're not an emergency. Um, it's things that we'd like to get done.
Oh, the water is something. I don't know, you gotta help me here.
Well, it's, it, that's a, that's a crapshoot. Any, any day you can have a hurricane come in and wash something out, or lose a pipe, but, um, some of it's just cleaning, that's not.
I mean, based on what you gave me, this is, you gave me three years' worth of work, at least.
Right.
Could this stuff last three years?
Um, some of it, and some of it, yes, but, but I, I don't, I don't have a crystal ball, so I.
I know, but you're, but you gotta give me a judgment call, you gotta make a gut call.
The gut, the gut call is most of this stuff, that I thought it was gonna be a problem, I would have had it higher on the list. So everything is prioritized on this list.
Okay.
Let's. There's. Is any of those, is any of these fourteen items here part of the six million dollar project?
Um, the only one, the only one that technically is part of the six million dollar project is number four. Um, yeah, it's number four. Um, that's one of the items we were going to potentially, if we needed to bump down, um, to recoup some cost or whatever we need to do to make sure that current number one, if we bump Calachala, we were gonna potentially lose it. But I bet, I had, the reason I kept number four on all this, and I've had it on there for three or four years, and we just, I don't wanna call it an emergency because it's just a skimmer plate, but we don't wanna ignore it either. So that's one of them.
Chris, the six, the six million dollar loan that you're going for, is that second concrete, or can we change that?
No, we can change the amount the board set to six million dollar figure, said not to exceed, and typically, they're, they're gonna loan you that money for structural improvements, not maintenance, like cleaning ditches.
But the things like on this list,
Right.
can that justify increasing the loan?
Sure, I mean, we can expand the scope of the project.
Maybe we oughta just bite the bullet and go to seven. And get this done.
Are we still band-aid, band-aiding it, or?
What, no, that would get the whole thing done.
Oh, you're talking this nine hundred. Well, you could take two, well, you know, six hundred thousand.
To borrow seven million dollars to get this whole damn thing done, and be done with this? Well, we'll never be done with this.
No, we're not gonna be done with this.
I understand that, but at least catch up a little bit.
I got no problem.
If we, if we, if we tried to get seven million and put this whole thing on it, is that a good thing? I mean, obviously, it's a good thing, but we're gonna have lots of problems?
Um.
After that?
Depends on, are you talking about just more issues?
I'm talking about we spent five hundred sixty-one thousand dollars to do the, what the county's giving us, and seven million dollars to do internally what we need to do on sewer and drainage. Um, is that covered, or, I mean, do we catch up once and for all?
It's never, you're never gonna be.
We never catch up.
We're never gonna catch up. Well, we've borrowed seven million dollars for twenty years, that's gonna put us in a situation where we can't really do what we can.
Kevin, in your opinion, if we spent the seven million, can you then maintain what you have to maintain at around three hundred thousand a year?
There's no way. Um, and they had part of the analysis that we had to do for financial, I don't know if Chris, if you read it or looked through it. They want you to estimate how much it's gonna cost you to maintain what you've done. So, we have, I don't, I won't say miles, but probably close to a mile of ditch that we have, we aren't able to maintain because there's trees growing in them.
Because black trees are trees.
Trees, and they're wet, they're in, and I, not to put on the record, but half the district back there was built in the wet. Um, it's all been mitigated before, and the roads were bugged up, but it's, it's wet, it's a wet mess back there. Um, and that's probably the reason that it probably wasn't maintained as well as it should have been, on top of the financial issues. So now we're going to clean all that, we have to have enough money to just, even district staff to go in and mow it periodically. So that's why you have to have proper equipment to get in there while it's wet, or even it's a little wet. You can't run a battling tractor down this ditch that's potentially had a part.
How mu, how much a year do you guys need to maintain sunlamps? Not fixing, not fixing suns up right, to maintain work that's been done.
I believe we were still trying to hire out that number, but it was, I was somewhere between forty and fifty percent additional money that we currently spend on staff and equipment.
So is that a half million?
Just, I don't know what the existing number is yet, I don't know, do we ever, do we have a chance to look at what we've spent?
It's probably around three fifty on the low end, so.
That's what, that's our normal budget, you said that wouldn't cover.
Well, I just meant, I just meant our own internal maintenance, just mowing.
No, let's try this. And I'm not trying to put you in a corner, I mean, we just gotta figure this out, is what I'm trying to do.
Right.
With the current sunlight situation, to maintain what we've done so far, would cost how much a year?
You mean maintenance-wise, as in our?
Just maintenance-wise on everything.
Are two hundred seventy-five to be put towards like major maintenance and improvements, or?
Not improvements, just maintenance.
Just stuff that like Bob's department's in charge of, right?
Yeah.
Okay, that's, I think that's what you were talking about, three fifty-ish? So right now?
So three fifty is maintenance. So going forward in budgets, we have to give Bob three fifty in maintenance, and then have a conversation on improvements, or fix.
Well, three fifty is what we already spent. If, once we do the six million dollar project, that's what I'm getting at. We have another approximately fifty percent of ditches and items that we're gonna have to clean and maintain that we cannot right now.
So now you're telling me that three fifty's not right?
No, 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 that's what we already allocate to it. I'm trying to tell you what, what we would have to spend to maintain it after we spend the six million dollars.
After we spend the six million, that three fifty becomes five hundred. Approximately.
And where the rubber hits the road, he's talking about the financial plan, and it's no different in the utility world, they want a financial sustainability plan if they're gonna give you money to rebuild or build a new lift station. But they want you to say, you know, we have the money to maintain it, we're not gonna loan you the money to fix it and bring it up to standard, and then watch you let it crumble over five years, and then with money we gave you. And that's the big problem. And it's no, no different on the utility system, the pipes haven't been paved, they haven't been cleaned, the man holds relief and put the sand in the pipes, and we just dropped thirty-five thousand in the last three days fixing pipe for lack of maintenance.
All right. Here's what I'd like to do. I'd like the board to consider taking the six million dollar loan and going to seven. And I'd like to know what that cost would be per year on repayment of the loan, based on what we know. We gotta estimate it on the six, let's estimate on the seven. Bring that back to the board next meeting, here's what it's gonna cost us, we'll look at it. If you think we wanna go to seven, we'll vote to go to seven, and then Chris, we can try and get the seven to us.
Let me just throw one up. Monkey wrench in your.
One point two million dollars for animal coverage.
Is that, is that something that we need to look at too?
Well, that would be on, on the utility side, and
Okay.
In storm, in storm waters, general fund, and there's ways to approach that.
Okay, all right, thank you.
The utility side's a different animal.
You can't look at this thing like utility, or something.
Well, it, it's not, because when you go to a loan from the utility department, they're gonna look at the rates and fees, and if you keep siphoning off millions of dollars into the general fund for golf course, they're not gonna loan the utility any money either.
I told you, we're going to sell it for the waste water.
Yeah, well, we are, if it, if that helps to be collection system improvements, but all I'm saying is, all this money that's getting siphoned away, and call it what you want, it comes out of the URIF fund, comes out of the capital fund. Then when they look at the financial statement for the utility, they're gonna go, you don't even have enough money to maintain what you have, why would you loan you money to let more stuff fall apart?
I thought, I thought, I'd love to stop that in the, okay.
Where's that three hundred eighty-one thousand coming from for turbo fund?
It's not gonna fix itself. It's not gonna fix itself in twenty-five, twenty-six, we're figuring this out.
Yeah, I know, we can figure it out, but the loan applications are going in now, and they want financial reports going with it to show you have financial ability to maintain with their loaning you money for you. Their track record's not too good.
We have more money, haven't we?
Chris, what's the cost for six million dollars a year? I mean, I, I mean, what's the cost for a loan for that?
I think we're looking at about four hundred thousand, or fifty.
And where does that all come from? From?
General fund.
General fund.
If you can afford it, we'll find out real soon.
So, so we don't have a commitment actually to give us that six million dollars yet anyway?
No, they want, they want that financial sustainability plan, and that's what we're working on, because they came back and said, give us this plan, and then we'll start talking.
So it's gonna be you about seven million?
It depends, they might tell you you have to raise your rates, or what's your assessment?
And that may, and that may happen, yeah.
We've already decided to raise the rates for the next five years, the utilities, and we've already decided that if necessary, we're gonna raise these assessments five percent for the next five years. So the money is there. Unless you're, unless I'm hearing something I don't know about.
No, there's just a huge backlog.
I mean, it's not gonna be, and then you got two years to start paying off the loans, right? So when it comes time to pay off the loans, the money is there to pay off those loans on a yearly basis.
We set that up for the six million dollars is in the rate right now that that's served us for.
All right, so we're gonna try and get your next million.
Okay.
But I need for you guys, every year, to tell us what it takes to maintain this stuff. I can't, if, if I, if the board tells you three hundred, and that's the wrong number, by God, you better tell the board, that ain't the right number.
Well, that's, that's, some of that information I do not have, I don't know internally what the board, like staff.
Somebody's gotta know what it's gonna cost to maintain it.
Right, right, but.
Somebody should have a plan on what you have to do to maintain it.
Well, right. Right, right, so what we're talking about maintenance, is everything that we're gonna be fixing, we have to maintain it every year. And that's what you, that.
I don't know, that's, that's.
What we have to, yes, yes, because the problem is, is like we're saying, the trees grow in, if we don't get back to it. If we don't do it every year, there's no sense to do it.
Why, if, if it's gotta be every year, then that's.
Yes, it's gotta be every year, and, and I think that's the cost you're looking for, right?
That is what, yes.
Okay, well, I'm trying to.
Yeah, that's right, all right.
Yeah, I mean, I.
I do want to clarify, just to clarify, I, I know we have a budget on improvements, and some of that is maintenance, really, that's the two fifty, two seventy-five. To me, that's not exactly just strictly maintenance, day-to-day maintenance.
Here's what I want, and you and Chris can decide what you want to do. I wanna say to you guys, I'm just gonna cost to maintain all these culverts and all this other crap.
Right.
And you're gonna, you know, for the budget next year, and you're gonna say, right, in my opinion, five hundred thousand, I'm gonna say, okay, is it in the budget? You're gonna say whatever you're gonna say.
Right.
That's what I want. It's not that hard.
No, I understand that, but it's just, there's a lot of, well, for me, and there's information that I don't have, and I can't.
I, I, this is for next year's budget.
Right, right.
But in the meanwhile, you should figure out what you guys need needs attention this year. Because what we're saying is, if you take this whole budget, or this whole request, and we try and cover it through a loan, what that means is you've got three hundred thousand to maintain what you got. Am I correct?
You're gonna, you're gonna need more than five. We're at three fifty now. Yeah, because we're gonna be doubling what we're asking to do. You're asking to do it, and you gotta understand that. You know, it's a lot.
I'm talking about this year. If we, if we get a loan and get in the money for this year,
Yeah.
he's got three hundred thousand in the budget to ma, to maintain what we got. Is that, and you said that was a good number, based on what we have now.
That, that, what you're calling maintenance, you know, I consider maintenance are two different things. These projects here, you're not gonna be installing pipe for maintenance every year. So we do, we do repairs and maintenance in this, or improvements and maintenance in this budget we're presenting.
I'm not gonna get hung up on names. Call, call what you want to call it, how, how are you gonna take care of all these things?
You're asking why, right? I'm not saying you're not asking for the right thing, but I'm saying it's more complex than a two seventy-five or two fifty.
Well, that's why we pay you, I'm up with the numbers, I'm not supposed to.
No, I can't tell you how much staff costs, I'm in trouble, that's what I'm saying, is also maintenance.
Who's supposed to tell us?
The district knows how much they pay their employees.
Between the, the two of us, you come up with the number that we need to have in the budget.
Who's supposed to give us a number? Who's supposed to give us a number? I mean, I don't know, how, will we pick a number, we'd be in big trouble, I'll spend so much money, we don't know what to do. I mean, you guys are getting paid, you gotta give us a number.
So we'll, we'll work on coming up with a.
It's for next year's budget. I'm just saying, this is how we should work.
Part of that difficulty is when you look at the historical expenditures, obviously, they weren't anywhere near being adequate to maintaining what we have, so it's just been, it's not a disrepair, so.
That's what we had there last year, so I guess that's been done for this year. That's exactly what they did.
That's how we came up with the six million dollar loan to begin with. With stuff that we were told should've been done, that wasn't done.
And that's improvements, not maintenance. That's new pipe, you know?
Alright, so. Let's see if we can, we're gonna find out, you can go ahead with the top seven items. Unless we, uh, we'll go ahead and try and figure out on the loan, and how much money we have in reserves, try and make a decision at the next meeting for. Is anybody okay with that?
Yes, yes.
Otherwise, I don't think we're gonna, but I do need you to come up with, I mean, what do you do with your crew? Does anybody here go out and check these things? I mean, that's maintenance, but.
Yeah, we, we.
Okay, so you gotta schedule. So that's fine, you should tell me, you got, you got it.
Well, what are you, we'll, we'll come up with a cost for it, well.
For what?
We'll, we'll come up with a cost for it, well, that's what you would report.
You gotta budget this guy, I mean, if, if you can't live within the budget this year, then you tell me. Otherwise, it's about, you know, having a maintenance plan, go with it. If you need more money, you have a bad bagel, you have a bad plan. That's what we're trying to avoid. Anything else in this? Alright guys, will we visit next meeting? Thank you. I guess, Bob Hilt, you got an update on Sheriff Department? Okay, so, tell us about this.
That's a copy of the contract that we have to agree to, as far as, um, if we hire a definite span, wagon patrol, just stop times, that, it's forty-five dollars an hour, and it's a minimum of three hours. I had a compiled, um, sheet on the back of what some cost would be, but I was, I made a mistake on, on how many hours we were going to contract them for, so they, they were inaccurate, and I didn't, I didn't.
I think, I think originally, correct me if I'm wrong, Max, I thought we were doing it in the district for eighteen hours a month?
Okay, I didn't, I, okay, I didn't, I didn't know that, yeah, I didn't know that.
I think, Chris, do you remember what that was? It's about eighteen hours a month? I think it's, because it's only about eighteen thousand to seventeen thousand a year. When we originally agreed to do this. That's, I could be wrong, because I'll go back, this is about four, five years ago.
That was before Chris.
Yeah, Mike, I, I think Mike said that we did it, it was four hours per day that we, uh.
Was it four hours per day?
That's what Mike said, I thought it was six, but Mike said it was four.
Okay, three hours.
So let me ask you this, they're willing to do this?
I, you're saying what now?
They are willing to do this?
Yes.
So we just got to decide what extent we want to do this?
Well, there's some other concerns I'd like to discuss with the board prior to doing this. And I have to, I have to compile some stats for you too first.
What's that?
There are issues as far as what we want them to do. Now, um, some of our stop lines are incorrect, so they won't enforce those. Some of our stop signs are not proper piped, so they won't enforce those. Um, seriously, seriously.
Well, they didn't.
No, they didn't, all they did is issue warnings.
That's all, oh, so they'll issue warnings?
No, issue warnings, but they won't issue a citation. Unless, unless the signs are proper piped, the line, if you, if you travel through our area right now, some of the stop lines, if you stop behind the stop line, you can't see the oncoming traffic. And if you proceed past that stop line where you can see technically by law, you will ran that stop. So there are corrections that we would have to make, as far as some of the bushes that would have to be moved back to those proper, you can see down the intersection, and all that type of stuff has to be considered. If it's not, if you can't see the oncoming traffic and you have to run the line, th- this is just what I'm, you know, I, okay.
Hey Bob, how much do they, do they do now?
No, oh, I don't know, I don't know how often they're, I see them here once in a while, but not, not to the extent of four hours at a time.
I know, I just wanted to know if they, if they actually even did.
I do see them in.
A lot of money, it's just, I don't know if they do it all.
I do see them in here frequently, but as to what their stats are, I don't know.
I mean, this all arose because some people were complaining about people going through stop signs.
And we do got that issue, right?
But if we have to start trimming bushes, raisings, and lowering stop signs, certainly pikes, I'm not so sure that, that this good idea was worth it.
It's just another example of not doing things properly the first time. And if we don't have the stop signs at the right levels, then they ought to be made to the right level. And if we got code enforcement looking at, do, do we have them where you can see when you're at the white stop line, if they don't, then the code enforcement should be telling those landowners, they need to cut the shrub back. Yeah, we've opened up another can of worms, but now that we have it, we can't ignore it.
Okay.
No, you really can't, because I've almost gotten hit twice this last week at Sunland in.
That is exactly the intersection that I'm talking about.
At that.
I looked at that this morning when I came to work.
And one of them was like a truck pulling, and I hadn't, I had stopped, I had my legs around, and he didn't even slow down.
If you stop behind the stop, the stop line, you cannot see down that street.
Alright, let's try this. How many hours have we wanted to vote for this? Let's just, oh.
I'd like to know how many hours a month Flashman plans on being in Sunland. What are they currently?
Yeah, that's right. I think I agree.
I saw him in that driveway.
If they're not giving us anything, why aren't they giving us anything?
He deserves something, that's all.
You want me to see if I can compile some of that for you, I can, and I'll let you know that I'm still waiting for some other information that you've asked me to contain or to provide to you, and I've been waiting two weeks, and I have no less than a half dozen calls in, and Maria entered risa after those stats, and I still haven't received.
Well, I mean, he must be providing, in his budget, he's saying how many hours he's spending at Sunland.
You are part of Highlands County, they should be here anyway.
I understand, I'm asking you, what kind of schedule does he have for Sunland?
Let me see what I can find out.
Thank you.
And can you give us an estimate of how much money we've lost through civil issues and open races?
They should be doing that.
That would be, that would be the issue, but a lot of that stuff is on property or in, um, I don't know if you consider it right away, how far the right of ways are. A lot of those hedges and bushes, people don't trim them back, you, and of course you've seen the curbs and, yeah.
But again, that's, that would be a code enforcement issue, you have to trim them back. It's not proper for that stop sign.
I will.
If that's specific.
That's what the board directs me to address, I will address it.
I'd like to know how many hours they give us.
Yep, I can, I can find that out.
I appreciate that, I also like to know how many hours we want to give the sheriff. I, I think we're better off right now, while Bob is going through the ordeal of changing the heights of the stop sign, and heading the right way or however you wanna look at it, there's no reason for us not to have somebody come to give out warnings. Because I think warnings initially would be very effective as well. So I still think we should go ahead with this, correct what we need to correct, and then the guy can start giving out tickets if indeed it's necessary. That would be my recommendation. Are you good with that?
Yes.
So we have to decide, according to this, uh, you gotta give them three hours minimum per detail, uh.
Can they move for those three hours, not sit at the same stop sign and all?
No, they would probably move them.
They would move around.
So how many hours a month do we wanna give us? What do you guys wanna think about it, do this at the next meeting? I mean, I would say if you give them twenty hours.
Well, let's find out how much, how many hours she's given us, and then we can make up.
Well, I think we signed an agreement that this is how many hours they have to do.
Yeah, that is, they have, but I want, what did they give us now?
For, for our jacks, for our jacks money. We can wait till we get that information if you want, I, I can tell you what, whatever they're telling you, I don't believe it's happening.
I don't think it is either.
You wanna wait till we hear from them?
I would wait till we hear from them, because if, if they're, if, if we don't, if we don't know how much they're giving us now, and we contract with this, with them to give us twenty hours a month, and they, and all, and all we're getting is twenty hours a month, we're just saying that to do the job they should already be doing.
That's right, that's why. Okay, let's find out, try and find out that information, table this in the next meeting. Basketball called up here.
Um, I have our stats compiled of complaints that we handled, but, I mean, most of ours were loud music, kids fighting, uh, foul language, older kids bullying younger kids, and then of course the shooting a month ago. But, um, a lot of the complaints that are of more serious nature were all handled by the sheriff's department that we weren't even called about, and we don't know about till the next day. So I have got a call in to them, saying, look, can you compile those complaints, and could I get a list of them? But I'm still waiting. I, I, I just want to report if I give you what we know.
All I'm looking for is somebody called up, should we close the basketball courts now? Well, I need, so I didn't have to go compile it, because I, I think we need to see why.
Alright, I will, I will do my diligent best to get the rest of those stats compiled for you and get them to you.
I mean, you guys agree, until we know, I'll be closer. And I suppose if we can't get them, we probably need a recommendation from everyone. I mean, good luck, we're trying to get it. Alright, so we'll wait on that one. Tony fought, he forced his brochure. Everybody have a chance to look at that?
Yeah.
Anybody have any questions? I do. Should we not put in there something about what the fines would be for the violations?
We don't have those, I mean, we haven't established anything yet, we have maximums. We have maximums, but we don't have, I mean, we don't have anything set so right now as far as.
I understand that, but if, when, when this thing does go out, should that not be included, is my question.
If it's online, it's not gonna be a hard thing to add, and, uh, actual.
No, but we're talking about the piece, right?
Yeah.
Should, should, all I'm asking is, it doesn't mention what fines are for the violations, should that not be included in this piece, that's my question.
We can add what the maximum fine is, or, I don't know.
I would do the maximum fine, I wouldn't say what each individual.
We don't have individuals, that's what I'm saying, is we don't have individual fines for individual violations, we have a maximum fine we can charge for violations. Yeah, I think, I think one line, a list that's probably not bad idea. Uh, we can, you know, say, yeah, we can, yeah, get up, yeah, we can find you up to an excellent amount.
Can you squeeze that in here something?
Sure.
If I say so, I'll say it, what happens?
Yes, try to see if you can do that, and then, just so I'm right, I understand this. The only, it's all the same information as before, with the exception of the other common violations enforced by Highlands County, that's new information.
Really much, right.
Which is good, I mean, but everything else seemed to be the same from the old piece, which is fine. So let's see if we can get in what the maximum fine would be somewhere on there. And then we'll take a look at it, we'll go.
Very good.
Everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
Uh, what's, Bob, what's the long banners? I see they all came down, was that from the storm or was that from the?
Well, uh, we took, we took down as many as we could take down in the time that we had. The hurricane, we weren't sure if it was gonna hit us as hard as it hit us. But we did take a lot up and down, there were several that blew out. The sun has a big impact on banners, it deteriorates, it's stitching, or that they come loose. But I talked to Mike Sallor, who we got the previous banners from, Sallor signs, and he said the prices went up pretty significantly, it grew from just thirty percent.
How much?
Thirty percent, so they went from about seventy-five dollars, eighty-five dollars a banner to a hundred and three dollars.
A hundred and three dollars for one banner?
Yeah.
How many banners have you had?
Sixty, well, we ordered, we have sixty places.
Sixty?
We order, uh, six extras, so we will have three extra sets, so we have sixty-six.
So six thousand dollars worth of banners? I guess the board has a desire, do you wanna spend that kind of money? I mean, I think we should, I mean.
This is part of.
I mean, it's, it's Sunland, it makes us different, it makes us stand out, we've got, we already got whatever laws that you're having. They look pretty dumb if you don't put something on it.
And, and in the, um, community services budget, the banners are included every year. We have funds that we put in to allocate, to do those.
So we have six thousand dollars allocated?
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, we do, they're, they're ordered, it's taken care of, it's a complete non-issue. We are used to ordering them, we try and replace them.
So we order?
Yeah, they're ordered, they're on the way, we're, we're, we're set, I'll go.
Because of that stuff, we don't even know about, they got the money.
Yeah, we, we put them in there, we try and change them out twice a year.
Next time, cut me off and tell me we're good, we order.
You got it, yes, sir.
Yeah, this has gone on long enough today anyway.
We're taking them, it's alright.
We're good.
Alright, so you got them cut, that's a good one.
I have one question about the gentleman with the pit bulls, what, what he, in his backyard, is that security?
I've not heard about that.
I, I don't know why he didn't call in. That's, I mean, it's unfortunate, but it's not our concern, I mean, that's, we don't have any ability to enforce that, that's what the controls for.
I just noticed it was very quiet when he said release them.
Anyway.
You would've thought he would've called in the control since they were our.
I sure thought so, seven o'clock in the morning.
Okay, I believe that's it for here, anybody have anything they wanna add on? Any public comments from anybody, any board comments? We are adjourned.
I'm awake.
It's seventy-two degrees in here.
It's not gonna be seventy-four.
Yeah, well, the problem is, is I don't want everyone to be comfortable, I know it's seventy-one, you want.